It is to call it the order, so if we could have a roll call, please, and we'll get started.
Counselor Bateen?
Here.
Counselor Nozworthy?
Present.
Counselor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baxter?
Present.
And Mayor Brooke?
Present. Thank you so much. Now I'd like to just ask counselors to identify any real or perceived conflicts of interest on any of the agendized items on tonight's discussion. Seeing none, we will move on to public participation. And I'd like to say that this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais, but citizens should address their comments directly to City Council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall, please, use the raise hand function if you're using the Zoom application to indicate that you would like to make, provide a comment. And if you are calling into the meeting using your telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak and will unmute you at that time. It's very simple, just hang in there with us while we do this. And please start by stating your first and last name and your home address for the record, as usual. Be advised that this is a live television broadcast, and so your video camera will show up when you speak. Or if you are calling in using your telephone, your phone number will be displayed on TV. With that, I'd like to say that we have primarily two large agenda items unless there is a consent agenda to be discussed this evening. And those are dealing with the homeless camp. That'll be item, spare with me for one second, that'll be item 9.2, which is a public hearing. At that time, during that public hearing, we will hear all the testimony that anybody out there wishes to provide for that, for the lease, for the Neighbors in Need Alliance and the establishment of a homeless sheltering area. So if you have a comment for that, please hold for that public hearing and not during public participation. However, if you have comments regarding the possible action regarding a request to allow the ongoing use of Buckley Park for a Black Lives Matter memorial, there is no public hearing around that. That will simply be a discussion item amongst councils, so I won't open it up for a public hearing. So the appropriate time to provide comment for that particular item is clearly during public participation, which is now. So with that, I'll open it up for public participation and ask Mitchell Carter, our moderator, to see if there's any raised hands out there that might be able to speak on any issue, which includes the Black Lives Matter park issue, if there's any folks who wish to weigh in on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for that introduction. My name is Mitchell Carter, and I will be your moderator this evening. If you are here to speak during public participation, please use the raise hand function. I do see some people have raised their hand. I will be keeping time on my phone here on this end, so please, please watch my video for the time limit. I am going to allow Jeff to speak. Jeff, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and your address, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Jeff Pleeker, address Ten Town Plaza. I would like to read a prepared statement, if I may. I'm not sure if it will go beyond three minutes, but it's probably in the neighborhood. If I run long, you can let me know. "I read in the Herald that Mayor Broke and Councilman Barbara Nozworthy attended the BLM protest that took place last Friday in Buckley Park. It is troubling, but not entirely surprising that the mayor and council member would exercise such poor judgment as to lend credibility to an organization that is openly racist and admittedly Marxist. Given the open vilification and racial hatred, racial hatred towards whites and the ongoing calls to defund the police, coupled with the hate-filled rage, violence, and destruction that BLM and their sister organization Antifa has brought to so many cities around the country, I would have hoped that the Durango government members would have taken all measures to distance themselves from these groups. I do realize that it is popular and perhaps even expected that Democrats and some people on the left will accept, support, and even condone the horrific and violent and openly racist acts of these groups. I was just hoping that our city leaders would have exercised better judgment. Perhaps you, like many who get their news exclusively from the mainstream media, are getting a completely distorted picture of what is actually happening in cities like Portland, Minneapolis, Seattle, Chicago, Los Angeles, New York City, et cetera. If this is the case, I recommend that you tune into other news sources, perhaps look at YouTube for videos that are being put out that is showing you what is actually happening in our country. Because the mainstream media does not report honestly or accurately on this matter. Many of our once beautiful cities are being destroyed in real time by the hateful and now violent members of BLM and Antifa, while local governments just stand by recklessly justify their terrorism under the banner of racial justice. Police are vilified, harmed, or killed for just being in law enforcement. The rule of law has completely broken down in these cities, where now anarchy rules. Innocent people, senior citizens, children, are afraid for their lives because the police can't or won't protect them, given the sheer scale of the ongoing nature of the violence from BLM and Antifa, which is so terrible and widespread that law enforcement just can't defend against it. These cities have become actual war zones with the terrorists being our own citizens. The mayors and governors in these cities and states have ordered police to stand down, in the case of Minneapolis and Portland and Seattle, and ordered them to abandon their police stations so these anarchists can take over and demolish or burn the buildings."
And this, please, your time is exceeding at this point, so we will.
All right.
Thank you.
There's more to say on this subject, and I hope you will listen.
Okay, we'll move, Mitchell, do you have another participant? That three minutes was up, and we'll move on to the next one.
Yes, we have quite a few others. I'm going to allow Harrison to speak. Harrison, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Harrison Wen. I am uncomfortable giving my address. I've received threats online from people. The Durango police haven't taken care of that, so I don't want to give my address for public record.
Okay, Mr. Wen, please, please proceed.
Okay. "It wasn't less than 15 hours after Jacob Lake was senselessly shot seven times by police in Wisconsin that the city of Durango Parks and Rec came rolling up in their trucks to destroy the memorial for Black Lives. As we all know, the Durango Parks and Rec and city of Durango removed the memorial at Buckley Park. This memorial was not set up or maintained by the Southwest Movement for Black Lives. Rather, community members have taken the initiative to maintain and add to what was the memorial. It grew into something beautiful and community-oriented. This memorial is and was a sanctuary that provided comfort for BIPOC, the homeless, LGBTQI+, and all oppressed peoples. By removing the memorial, the city of Durango and Parks and Rec made themselves clear. Removing the memorial was an insult to the Black Lives that are senselessly lost by police violence. It was an insult to the community that has found, that have a newfound feeling of safety within Durango. If this were a memorial for beloved community member, would it have been removed so senselessly by the city of Durango and Parks and Rec? Why is the city picking and choosing which ordinance and mandates and city codes they want to enforce? Is it because you are hearing people tell you that you don't, that they don't like the phrase Black Lives Matter? Are you bowing down to the racist and the fascist who can't handle the three-word statement Black Lives Matter? This is all feels like a strategic attack on the movement and the BIPOC in our community. How can we move forward from here? How can we open our hearts and our minds to the oppressed people in our community? The hate this movement has received from people in our community is incredibly harmful. The city doesn't need to give that hate to them as well." Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wen, thank you very much, and thank both of the speakers for expressing their constitutional right to speak. And, Ms., Mitchell, do we have another speaker?
Yes, I am going to allow Debbie to speak. Debbie, please unmute yourself, identify and your address. You have three minutes. You should have a pop-up button in the middle of your screen asking you to unmute.
It just did. I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'll pull up my. My name is Debbie Shu, and I live at 67 Sun Ridge Lane. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Debbie Shu, and I'm the priest at St. Mark's Episcopal Church. Tonight, I'm wearing my St. Mark's hat as well as my resident of Durango hat. For tonight, I've been reflecting back on the progress of Nina and our community's efforts to be good neighbors to our unhoused brothers and sisters. A word that kept arising was hope. Nina began in conversations at St. Mark's. Discouraged by the divisiveness in our country, we asked, can we as church be a local place where real, open, civil conversations can happen? Then we said, we probably need to practice ourselves, so we did. Going through a course on civil conversation, including the idea of civic conversation, how do we engage with elected leaders and others in a positive, effective way? The issue that rose to the top as most on our hearts was the plight of our unhoused neighbors, those who were showing up on our doorsteps and asking for a warm and safe place to stay. It's a very hard thing to tell a fellow human being no to that civil request. So we invited as many faith communities as we could find to join us on this journey, and the Neighbors in Need Alliance was born. Nina met with city councilors and county commissioners and staffers of both, with unhoused neighbors and nonprofits who know them and everyone they could find to teach them. I'm grateful that you, as a council, were willing to listen and that Kevin Hall was a helpful partner. I saw the excitement and hope growing on the faces of people who had never spoken to an elected official. They're listening, Debbie. I've never done anything like this before. There is no greater hope than seeing your efforts begin to make real changes. I saw the excitement and hope when the lockers went down, went in downtown. Idea from Portugal come to life here at our home. Project Espero's birth, with a name literally meaning hope, meant that finally, in our town, housing-first homes would anchor people up and out of homelessness. And I saw and felt the incredible hope in the PACS council chambers the night you accepted the PATH report, including its top-tier priority of a transitional shelter community like Elkview. I confess, the joy that night swept away the cynicism I can fall into and made me remember why hope is something real. I know that my eyes weren't the only ones watering that night. This evening, you have the chance to keep that hope alive. I understand that things like ordinances and precedents and opposition are real, truly, I do. But also real are COVID, the cold weather that will land people on our doorsteps sooner than we imagine, and the timeline for Nina funds. But also real is the ability of human beings to sit down and plow through any remaining concerns. They are solvable, and many stand ready to help in the process. I hope that you will agree to go ahead with the lease. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reverend Shu. And by the way, I might just add that Mitchell does hold up the cellphone with the time on it as it approaches the one-minute mark. And just for the speaker's help in wrapping up as necessary. But I just want to make speakers understand that that is a resource that they can veil themselves up. And with that, do we have another speaker?
Yes, we do. I am going to allow Carolyn to speak. Carolyn, please unmute yourself and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mitchell. This is Carolyn Hunter, 1743 West Second Avenue. And I'd just like to say I have been present at two of the vigils at Buckley Park, and I have found them both very, very peaceful, nonviolent, positive events that recognize one of our nation's core values, which is justice for all. And so I would like to, I applaud the city for considering, you know, a variance to extend the memorial at Buckley Park. And I'm sure if it is, if parts of it have been taken away, that they can be replaced because the community spirit of Durango goes on. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. And, Mitchell, do we have another speaker?
We do. We have quite a few. I am going to allow Crest to speak. Crest, please unmute yourself and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mitchell. My name is Crest Elke, and I don't feel comfortable giving you my address. I'm a Durango resident for eight years. I own two businesses here. And I'm going to speak today on the Buckley Park Black Lives Matter memorial. I have also read comments in the Durango Herald quoting council members wanting to preserve the First Amendment rights of the BLM group. I would encourage each one of you, because sometimes we forget to reread the First Amendment. I read it several times today. The amendment generally speaks to what government will not do. It speaks to what government will not do. It does not speak to helping any cause advertise its position on public land, regardless of any councilperson's personal position. If there's any action taken on this very controversial matter in Durango, I feel it should be put to public vote and simply not decided by the council. These signs take away from the beauty of our park and do nothing to improve Durango. They are very political and very divisive. And let's be clear. Any action to approve any ongoing memorial by the council has nothing to do with protecting First Amendment rights and everything to do with supporting this very controversial cause. A side note, removing illegal signage of any kind, Black Lives Matter, Christian Lives, whatever, is not racist. It is a reasonable action to enforce the law. If you don't like the law, change the law. Lastly, I just want to say this group nor any group needs any, needs the city council to protect their First Amendment rights. Our Constitution does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elke. And, Mitchell, do we have another comment?
I have someone listed as Galaxy Note Nine. I'm going to allow them to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Tracy. I'm one of the leaders of the Southwest Movement for Black Lives. I'm a Durango resident. And I'm here to talk about why we want to keep it there. This is a movement that has become part of the community. This is not just from our organization. This has become something bigger than that. And it's not about racism or division. It's literally about, about racial justice. It's about equality and about bringing community to get, community together and promoting inclusion and diversity in this predominantly white town. And that is a space that a lot of us who are minorities don't have. And it is a place, a safe place, that people feel they can gather and come get support and share and learn. And we've had, you know, up to 500 people coming to share and listen. And this is what the community has been supporting, and the community does want. I feel like the community is speaking and wanting this to stay. And now that it has become something bigger also than, than just BLM, it's bigger than that. And we're not about, I think someone had said, you know, division and causing violence. We have never had any violence or hate speech come from, from our group. We're about coming together, sharing and educating with one another. We believe in centering the experiences and leadership of the most marginalized Black people, including but not limited to those who are trans, queer, women, femmes currently and formerly incarcerated immigrants, disabled, working-class, poor. We believe in transformation and a radical realignment of power. The current systems we live inside of need to be radically transformed, which includes a realignment of global power. And we are creating a proactive movement-based vision instead of a reactionary one. And so, you know, the only time there has ever been any kind of issues does come from people who want us to remove it. They don't want us to gather. But there are never issues with that. We're not here to, to harm people or burn anything. It's literally a monument, it's literally a memorial to honor those lives lost. This is a national move, it's a global movement at this point. And that's what that stands for. And not to be an eyesore to the public. This is something the community has come together to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. And with that, we'll take another comment.
I'm going to allow Stefan or Steven to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Stephen Bisbee. Address is 232 Pine Ridge Loop. And I am a best-remembered at St. Mark's. And you've already heard about the humanitarian aspects of Nina. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the practical aspects, the fact that we can get it insured. I will add, I will add a simple comment. If you want to get an insurance company's attention, mention that you have a homeless facility that you would like to get insured. And they come back with an awful lot of questions, some of which are, do you have an address? How many buildings? What will the purpose of the buildings be? How many residents will there be? The answer is 25. Will you allow permanent stays? The answer is no. Are there rules? The answer is yes. Are there, are there warranties and signatures of people agreeing to follow those rules? The answer is yes. I could go on, but there are a lot of questions, and they are very detailed and go into what we'd call the prudent person taking care of it. And the answers to all of those were well-documented, well-thought-out, and to such a degree that the insurance company has agreed to add Nina to the St. Mark's facility until such time as it can go forward. So I give that as a practical support for Nina in addition to fulfilling a humanitarian need and augmenting that so well. And that's, those were my comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bisbee. I might just refresh folks that may be in the queue that anything related to the Nina or the lease for the potential camp this evening should wait and be most impactful during the public hearing portion. I'll actually open a public hearing specific, receive comments from those folks that wish to speak to that issue. And again, the item that is not a hearing tonight is the Black Lives Matter monument issue. So this is the appropriate time for that discussion. And simply ask anybody talking about the Nina camp to hold comment till that, till I open that hearing shortly. Stay tuned. It'll be coming up shortly. So thank you for that. Mitchell?
Next on the list is Shannon. I'm going to allow Shannon to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm needing to wait until the Nina portion, so I need to, I'll just wait until then. Thanks.
Thank you, Shannon.
All right, the next person on the list is Richard. I'll allow Richard to speak. Please unmute yourself, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
This is about the Nina comment.
Mr. Dilworth, if it's specific for the Nina issue, perhaps you could hold that comment till the public hearing, which will be forthcoming. Yeah, that's most impactful. You're welcome to talk anytime about anything, but that issue is a, a public hearing, special public hearing this evening.
Okay, the next on the list is Karen. Karen, please unmute yourself and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Karen Pontius. I'm 288 Animus View Drive and in Durango. I want to say everything that Tracy said about the Southwest Movement for Black Lives. I totally echo that and what Harrison said earlier. But I want to talk a little bit about what the first speaker said, because it kind of blows my words out of the water. He said that there's, BLM is a Marxist and racist and hate-filled ridge group, and it is not. It is leaderless. It's not like an organization that you can go and find the leader and sue them. It's a bunch of people getting together, because what we're dealing with is a racial reckoning. Black Lives Matter started in 2014 after Michael Brown was murdered in Ferguson, Missouri. So it's been around a long time. And finally, now we have a movement that the country's paying attention to and that is really getting a lot more people on board because they're getting the message that it's time to reimagine our future. Tracy said a radical realignment of power. And I'm sure that scares a lot of people, especially people that get their news from YouTube, which is not a credible source. But a radical realignment of power and a reimagining of all sorts of systems will be uncomfortable for many people. So I recognize that. But I want to make sure everybody here is that BLM is not an organization that, that holds all that. The other word he used was Antifa. I am Antifa. It means, it's a short word. It means anti-fascist. I am hoping that this country doesn't go down the road of fascism, but that is what Antifa means. Again, it is not a leaderless, it's a leaderless movement and not a group that you can find leaders for. This is an unusual request to keep the monument at Buckley Park. These are unusual times when, when people that haven't been listened to before are getting a chance to stand up at a mic and tell their story. And we have a lot of people here that this has been powerful for. So thank you for considering this, and I'm hoping that we can find a way to keep this memorial in Buckley. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's not getting under the time limit, so thanks, people, for being cognizant of our three-minute rule. And next speaker, please.
Next in line is Windalyn. I will allow Windalyn to speak. Please give us your name and address. Well, first, unmute yourself, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Windalyn. And no, I don't feel safe giving my address. Yes, I am here to request with all kindness to allow citizens of this country to continue having the memorial downtown. As an immigrant in this country and also a person of color in this town, it's the first time in 11 years that I can see people of color in the streets feeling safe, like just congregating. And it's my understanding that some people feel like we are dividing and we are in a cause for a revolution that doesn't really speak for love. I really believe that many generations behind or many, many generations ago, people actually fight for love. And this is the most specific fight for that, for the recognition of people that have been killed, that have been oppressed, that have been massacred. And we are not, somebody saying on Friday, we are not asking for revenge. We are asking for equality. And that's something that speaks big for the moment. I want to reply to the gentleman that speaks for divisiveness. I want to say that everybody, yes, the law can be used against or in favor of you. Like I have a lot of attorneys and lawyers, friends. Like I have a lot of attorneys and lawyers, friends, who says like, the law is written by people that actually make it confusing. So sometimes works on your favor if you want it and sometimes can work against some people. So with that in mind, Christmas, the Christmas tree on Buckley Park can be actually offensive for those who are not Christian. Can be offensive for those who are not celebrating Christmas and can be offensive and divisive because some people are not really in that religion. However, some other people accept it as a format of peace for those who celebrate Christmas and believe in Christ. I really believe that celebrating the life of somebody or people or nations or uh, historically people who have been killed, it should be something that should be, everyone should celebrate. It's just like Christmas, right? We are not divisive. We are speaking about the life of many people that have been oppressed. And I hope my analogy makes sense. I only have three minutes. Otherwise, I will explain it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mitchell, next comment, please.
Uh, next in the list, list is Bex. Um, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Uh, give us your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
We got you loud and clear.
Awesome. My name's Bex. I prefer not to give my address, but I am a Durango resident. And I'm calling in regards to the Black Lives Vigil that is in Buckley Park. I'd like to second or echo all of the sentiments beforehand about the importance of the Black Lives Movement and the Southwest Movement for Black Lives. I think it's really important and I think it's powerful that the community is coming together to show um, a peaceful way of demonstrating and making our wishes known to the city. And that's what you guys do, right? Um, and so we, I would like to ask that the vigil remain in place where it is at Buckley Park to serve as a symbol of hope and peace and the potential for change in this country and Durango specifically. Um, and especially um, the city council is in charge of, or uh, the police, the police department answers to the city council, yes.
That's correct.
So um, I think that by the city council allowing this vigil to remain in place um, is a very strong promise that the city council and the community of Durango um, is in support of the Black Lives Movement and the Black Liberation Movement and wants to have equality in this city. Um, so I think that um, allowing the vigil to stay and be maintained by the community as it's now um, would be a really powerful um, kind of promise that like we want to have equality in our city. Um, and we want to um, consider marginalized people in our, in our community because they exist and their voices are powerful and we need to lift them up together. Um, that's our responsibility as a community to come together and protect each other. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dex. Mitchell, next speaker, please.
Next in line is Enrique. I have allowed Enrique to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address and you have three minutes.
Uh, my name's Enrique. I'm not gonna give you my address, but I do live in downtown Durango. Um, by a show of hands, if you don't mind, how many of you believe in equality?
Uh, yeah, uh, this is your chance to speak, not.
Uh, I'm speaking. By a show of hands, how many of you believe in diversity here in Durango? Thank you. So I find it very cowardice that we refuse to, that city council, people that I actually elected, you guys are supposed to represent me, or have refused to take a stance on the Black Lives Matter stuff. Um, it's, it's a shame that we have a peaceful uh, little memorial where our community can get together, especially those of color who feel very marginalized and for the most part left out of Durango, to get together and just talk in a peaceful and calm manner. Instead, what I see especially from DPD is nothing being done when there's heinous and disgusting right-wing uh, supporters who are throwing vile racist insults at us. Uh, this BLM memorial that we have at Buckley Park has been something of unity. It's been something where marginalized people in this community have been able to step up and and raise their voice and tell them that we're here in Durango. We're part of the community. Who are we hurting? Uh, how has that memorial hurt anyone in this town? And and the code enforcement, I mean, if we wanna get into code enforcement, I don't see anyone doing any code enforcement when it comes to the masks, when it comes to smoking on the sidewalks in downtown Durango. The court enforcement is a cop-out by city, by the city to to take down something that belongs and that unites people of color. I mean, I'm not surprised by this, especially with a board that's pretty much all white, that marked that people of color aren't getting a chance to leave something up that's beautiful and and unites this town. So what I would say is that y'all need to really take a good look at yourselves and see what kind of message you're sending to the people in our community who are trying to fight for equality. And instead, you're using a code enforcement that you're only using as an excuse to take down something that's peaceful and that brings our community together. If you're gonna enforce codes, enforce all the codes. Don't just enforce one thing because it fits your agenda and you can scapegoat something that you may not agree with, even though a lot of this town does agree with. Do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you. I might uh, indicate that this is a listening session. This is not a public hearing. So council, our job at during this portion of the hearing is, which is not a hearing. This is a public meeting and this is a chance for speakers to speak and for council to listen intensely to all parties. And we are trying our best to do that as we speak. So next, next speaker, please.
Um, next on the list is Emily. I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name and your address and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Awesome. My name is Emily Riggs and I'm not gonna give my address. As a predominantly white, fairly affluent town, we have a moral responsibility to recognize our bleeding and dying brothers and sisters. The BLM Memorial at Buckley Park has been a peaceful way of doing so. Please allow the people to continue recognizing this nationwide crisis through this healthy, harmless venue. It is easy to turn our heads to the unrest, to the white guilt. As we finally start to open our eyes, please do not ask us to once again turn our heads. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. Uh, Mitchell, next speaker, please. Thank you.
Uh, next one in line, Sylvia. I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? All right, sounds good. Uh, I'm Sylvia Deo and I also don't wanna give my address, but I do live in Durango. Um, and I wanna speak about the Black Lives Vigil because I think we're at a really unique point in our life right now or in our country's life. And I think we need to show solidarity for all citizens. And I think I find it really hopeful that a town like Durango can recognize that we have um, black and indigenous folks who are not feeling equality. And we can recognize that we're in a state of mourning. We're losing a lot of lives. We're losing people every day to police violence. And I think I find it really helpful to go to a space of mourning and to see a place where I can feel those feelings, where I can mourn those lives that have lost and especially those young lives. And I think that um, I also think it's a really helpful teaching tool or a way to bring children in. And I think, you know, our younger generation also needs to be aware of what's going on in the world. And I think um, especially the rallies or um, the vigil itself is a really useful way to bring children and be, I remember when I used to be brought to protest and I think it's very helpful to be, you know, help children be cognizant of what's been uh, happening and help them to understand that they need to enact an anti-racist practice and um, and I think that's really helpful in a community. And I also think that we have monuments to so many different people in this country. And a lot of them, I don't think that they deserve to have those monuments, but these are people who were innocent and that have been killed and that we've lost their lives and we've lost their potential and we've lost who they were. And I think everyone over the, all over the country is mourning. And so why not have monuments to those people? And why not have monuments to things that, to bad things so that people can actually feel those feelings and be present with what is happening in the world? And I think also it's really important because it gives space for black and indigenous folks in town to have a mourning space and have a space to talk and share how they feel in town. And I think that is what we need to be doing right now. And if we can, if they, if the black and indigenous folks in town want this vigil to stay up, we have to, we should listen to them. We should take, let them take the lead. We should, we haven't listened to them in the past. We need to listen to them now. So thank you so much. Um, yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Deo. Appreciate it. And uh, next speaker, please.
Um, no one else has raised their hand, but we do have a long attendee list. Um, if you are here to speak during public participation, uh, please use the raise hand function within Zoom. I do see that we have a couple people who have called in. Um, if you did call in on the telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
And again, I might uh, recommend that those folks talking about the Nina issue uh, refer, defer till a later time in our agenda this evening. Uh, but we're open for all comments regarding any other issue this evening.
Uh, we do have someone else. I'm going to allow Olivia to speak. Um, Olivia, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi, I am Olivia. She/her pronouns. I uh, live in Durango, but she's not to share my address. Um, I think that, I know that the idea is to keep the Black Lives Matter Memorial through November third, the election, but to me, I think it needs to go further than that. Um, Black Lives Matter is not political. It is truly saying that human beings are human beings and that their lives, their futures, their, their voices, their experiences, their trauma, their healthcare, their housing, their land, their, their joy, their existence matters. And the beauty of those, the, the people in Durango who've come together every month, um, despite, um, you know, despite the world around them, so many things happening. Um, the times that I've attended, it has been an opportunity for folks to come together to hear from the marginalized voices in the community in a predominantly white um, um, city i- in this country. And for the fact that this is even up for debate is, is disappointing because for, for people to go and to listen each week or each day because it's there beyond um, the Friday nights, um, to just, to just stop and take a minute to reflect on not what's had, not, not only what is happening currently, but it was, that is not new for so many folks for well over four hundred years. And for us to all be in, in a state of reflection, especially the white, white folks and non-black folks to use this opportunity as deep self-reflective and introspective time. And if a memorial um, can be part of that, it's, it's important to uphold it, especially because it means something especially for those in the community who are tired and exhausted and are, are experiencing a lot of trauma, experiencing a lot of trauma right now. And so I advocate for this to be, to be upheld well past the election because Black Lives Matter is not political. It is human. And it is something that, um, like those who have spoken before me have all attested to, that this is something that, um, you know, Durango is part of a global awakening for some of us. Many of, many folks have been, they're.
Just a few more seconds. In fact, your time is up if you have final.
Yes, thank you.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, uh, Olivia. And uh, next, next speaker, please.
Uh, next person on the list is Molly. I have uh, allowed her to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Molly Weiser. I live here in the city of Durango. I do not feel safe giving my address because um, people working around Black Lives Matter have been threatened and intimidated um, by people in opposition. I guess I just wanna echo the sentiments of the people who spoke previous to me about the importance of the memorial. I am gonna encourage this um, city council to use its creativity and its leadership to um, hold up a microphone to the voices of people of color in this town um, through the memorial and beyond. Because what we're hearing here today is not just that the memorial is important, but that people of color don't feel safe in our community, don't feel safe socializing, don't feel safe gathering, um, don't feel safe using our community the way that um, white-presenting people like myself and most of you um, can and that we take for granted. And I hope that this conversation leads to not only keeping the memorial, but moving beyond to figure out, not just through um, you know, existing channels, like the Community Relations Committee, as important as that is, but beyond to figure out how to make this a truly welcoming city for all, for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. And uh, Mitchell, are we, we have more folks in the wings?
Um, I do not see any other raised hands. Um, people in the attendees list, if, if you're here to speak during public participation, um, please use the raise hand function. Um, I do see another one here. I'm going to allow Sarah to speak. Sarah, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes. Um, Sarah, I do see that you have unmuted, but we cannot hear you if you are speaking. Unfortunately, we still cannot hear you. Um, you may want to try rejoining the meeting. Um, still, still can't hear. So I think we're gonna need to move on.
Apologize for that. Any technical difficulties? Anybody else in the, in the, in the wings?
Um, I do not see anybody, anybody else raising their hand. Um, if you are here to speak during public participation, now is the time. Please use the raise hand function.
All right, uh, Mitchell, I appreciate it. And uh, yeah, it's, it, uh, thank you for this uh, unique round of public participation and for all comments. And uh, it is, uh, I think as a council, we, we do take this extremely seriously. And uh, for the first time in uh, my eight years on council, we have people on both sides of this issue uh, not willing to share their address, which is telling in itself. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that the issue is that strong and that fearful uh, to have people that reside within our community that are, have been attacked. And I say it was both sides of, uh, uh, we're not willing to provide their, their basic address, which is understandable and certainly allowable this evening, given the content of the testimony provided. Looks like, Mitchell, we might have our.
Yeah, Mayor, we do have someone else who has raised their hand. Should I allow them to speak?
Absolutely.
Um, Trinny, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Mike Nunani at Trinity Collins. My pronouns are she/her. Um, I live in Durango. Do not wanna give my address. Um, I am an indigenous woman. I um, am a member of the Southern U Indian Tribe. So um, our neighbors to the south, um, I wanted to speak on behalf of the BLM Memorial and really um, you know, give my gratitude to everything that the leaders have been doing there. Um, I would love to see something built um, with indigenous people, black people and us to come together and create some collective power. Um, and really just, you know, feed each other and and build those beautiful relationships. Um, to me, that's what I've seen with this, um, these Black Lives Matter um, memorials, rallies on Fridays and, you know, it really is a beautiful thing to see as a person of color. You know, when, when people make this political, it really is hard to, to hear because this is the life that I live. My life is not a joke. It's not a political prank. It's not a political stunt, but it is me. It is who I am as an indigenous woman of this country. Um, and we have to remember that the land that we all reside on is, is Nuchland, Nuchu, you. We used to be here. We used to be here and respecting that and understanding that, that that's who was here before you. And so for me, it really is just building that collective power and growing and building healthy relationships and educating the community. Because unfortunately, you know, Durango does not really even know that there's tribes to the south and to the west of us. So for me, that's an important part of this. And seeing a memorial that allows for that, to see people of color, to see them out there and beautiful and that those who, that's who we are. Dewayak, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. And with that, are we at the end of our list, Mitchell?
I am going to say that this is last call for public participation. If you would like to speak to council this evening, please use the raise hand function. If you called in on the telephone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Mayor, I do not see anybody else raising their hand.
Thank you, Mitchell. Appreciate your help with that. And the next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, which we have none this evening, so we'll move right into Agenda Item 6, which is review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 7, that would be, or 8. And so with that, I'd like to have a reading of the consent agenda and followed by any councillors that would like to have anything removed.
Item 6.1 through 6.3 are approval of minutes. Item 6.1 is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from August 4th, 2020. Item 6.2 is approval of minutes from the study session of August 11th, 2020. 6.3 is approval of minutes of the city council regular meeting on August 18th, 2020. Item 6.4 is discussion and possible action concerning the villas at Hillcrest Phase 6 funnel as-built plat. Item 6.5 is discussion and possible action concerning an additional appropriation in the water fund for installation of water treatment plant electrical upgrades and backup generation at the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant, Project Number 1071. Item 6.6 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the Transportation Services Fund for the transit fleet replacement. Item 6.7 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the 2020 Streets Capital Improvements Program for the Thomas Avenue Project, Project Number 0180. Item number 6.8 is discussion and possible action concerning the submission of Colorado Department of Local Affairs Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Annual Grant Program application for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Item 6.9 is discussion and possible action on approving an engagement letter with Ida Bailey LLP for forensic accounting and internal controls examination. Item 6.10 is a request for a public hearing to receive public comment concerning an ordinance bending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango to establish a process to the address alleged municipal campaign finance complaints and violations, with a hearing to be held on September 15th. Item 6.11 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Larkin Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan abandonment and rezone with a special hearing to be held on September 15th. Item 6.12 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Maverick at South Fork Gateway Preliminary Plan. And that completes the agenda.
Thank you, Fay. And I might ask council if there are any items that would likely be removed, like to be removed this evening. And I see councillor Nosworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove item 6.5.
6.5 would be pulled from the agenda. Any others this evening? Seeing none, let's move on to approval of the consent agenda items, not including 6.5, and entertain a motion in that regard.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Batine?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Bricky?
Yes. Thank you for that. And let's get back to 6.5, which is a discussion and possible action concerning an additional appropriation in the water fund for installation of water treatment plant, electrical upgrades and backup generation at the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant. That's project number 1071. And councillor Nosworthy?
Sure, thank you, thank you. You know, I understand the importance of the project. My question is, last city council session, we had a lengthy discussion about this and the motion was to actually follow the CIP policy that we plan to put in place, which would be that any unused funds, in this case, it's over 400,000, would come back to city council. And then what we had discussed and I thought agreed upon was that they would be putting in a new request for the full 939,437. I listened to the tape, and that is what we discussed and the motion, and it's reflected in the minutes. So I'm curious if it was just misunderstood or forgotten or why we're not seeing the shift to following this policy as part of the request.
Dean, I'm prepared to speak, and I also have Jared Biggs here this evening to go through the details. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page regarding the CIP process. And in the CIP process, if there are projects that are currently underway that are appropriated, should a change order be needed, that request will come forward as a special appropriation. And that is the case with this project. For projects that have been completed and new projects that need to be then subsequently finished, the money would be let go, put back into the fund balance, and a new project would come forward for the full appropriation. So Jared is here to explain this specific project, but I want to make sure that we are all on the same page related to the process, related to current live projects and the need for special appropriations should a project exceed the originally budgeted amount. And then a new project where money that wasn't spent on a current project goes back to the fund balance, and then the new project is appropriated altogether on the whole. So...
Thank you, Amber. Jared? You got the floor.
Well, I appreciate it, Mayor Bricky, council members. I suppose I actually still have my sheet of notes from that meeting as well. We talked about, A, making sure it's in alignment with the CIP policy as drafted, and then number two, provide fund balances, which I know you all got, you got last week from the Adams Group, and I tried to summarize even further. So what I actually did after that meeting was I reached out to Devin Schmidt and asked her for the current iteration of that policy that had been drafted. And, you know, again, I'm not sure what document you all were working with, but I asked specifically for this. And under the section for CIP budget appropriations, as Amber mentioned, it said if new projects or additional resources are needed, it goes in front of council. That is what I had envisioned my request last meeting was, and the continuation to this meeting continues to be, so to speak. So below that item on that CIP policy is the CIP on carryforward projects that I think is applicable. And maybe we're mixing up, and maybe I have a misconception on what, as you said, was unused funds, councillor Nosworthy?
Yeah, I guess. Yes. Oh, go ahead, and I'll interject. Thank you.
I was going to say that, you know, we had full intention to use, and as I spelled out, I pointed to where it was in the budget on page 364. You know, those funds, we had full intention of using, and we're asking for the supplemental or additional appropriation to finish the project, in essence.
So I'll point out that the fund, by your own paper that you presented, the project was appropriated in 2013, seven years ago. And that's my concern, is that of that amount, it looks like 120,000 was spent. So you may have an intention of finishing it, but a seven-year hiatus from when it's appropriated to finished concerns me. And I think that there's a potential, no accusations, I just think that guardrails need to be in place, and we need to look at this. And seven years is too long to go without spending appropriated money or turning it back. So I think we can split, you might want to split hairs on this. My issue is trying to put in place something that brings back council oversight, particularly when funds, you may have every intention of building something, but it may take you 10 years from now, and I question the appropriateness of that. I don't question the need for the project. And what we raised during council discussion and agreed upon was to follow a process of appropriating the money, bringing the money back to be considered by council and doing it. So that's basically, my point is seven years is a long time to halve unused money.
I might say that a lot's happened in seven years as well that this project has responded to. So it's not like they've been sitting around just, oh my God, we forgot to spend that money seven years ago, as it might be a characteristic, you know, alleged here tonight. You know, council has moving parts. We all of a sudden created, there was a request from the public as well as city council to incorporate solar in that, to run this water treatment plant with solar. So there was a research and identification of opportunities within this money, the money that had been budgeted for this generic upgrade that Jared amongst others was asked to research and bring forth. And so that was, as it was shown in page 35 of our 217-page document this evening, well documented in terms of the research that he's been doing and bringing forth to us. And so I don't think the fact that it's seven years in the making, this is a big project. It's a long project. It was identified as a priority by council at that time, and it was budgeted at that time. It's remained in our crosshairs. And it's been rebut, it's been approved every year since for a cause. And I think what he's simply asking for money now is to get on with it. And I think if we don't take advantage of this now, it's only going to cost the taxpayers more money.
If I may just, if I did, just for the public, the project was approved in 2013, and additional 50,000 was appropriated in 2015. The first money was spent in 2016, that was 41,266. Then money was spent in 2017, that was 42,948. And then money on this project was spent in 2018 of 41,085. And then, this will be my final comment, is that the additional 500,000 did not appear in the CIP request for 2020. So I value it. I'm just pointing out that while many other things might have been going on in other areas within the water fund, this particular CIP project did not have much movement. And at least in the documentation, nothing since 2018. And I'll have nothing else to add. That's just my discussion.
I'd like to follow on to that, Mayor, if I can.
Sure, sure.
I, for the public, would also like to state, I think it's important to understand that when a project of any nature, that's a CIP project, comes forward, it gets voted on by council, is supported by the public, it passes, it makes the budget. It doesn't necessarily happen in a calendar year, and certainly a project in a public works department that needs to go on for multiple years, that includes design, includes funding, includes, you know, saving the money for it, includes all the moving parts that are relevant to engineering a project like this. For a future of a 25-year or 50-year impact, they don't happen overnight. And so the expectation that we're going to revisit and reallocate funds every 365 days for a project that has to happen for the community to have fresh water, which is one of the fundamental elements of what we're providing as a service to the city, is unreasonable. And so I hope it's not council's intention, and certainly councillor Nosworthy, the oversight is great, but to re-adjudicate every single prior council's budget decision when these are multi-year projects. And the citizens have a right to expect us to execute the projects that we've agreed to perform for their public health, public safety, recreation, and every other department that's in our community. And so to pick this project apart, say, well, you didn't spend all the money at once. Well, of course not. It's a long-term project, and it didn't happen in 365 days, and a lot of them don't. And so I think the public needs to understand that as well.
I understand and appreciate your comments, councillor Batine. I would also comment that we try to work on a five-year plan, and this is outside of that plan. And I understand the long-term nature of it. I'm just concerned with money that has not, have a plan to be spent. And I'm concerned with the high number of CIP projects that have a longer history than a five-year period for being completed.
Duly noted. Councillor Youssef or councillor Baxter? Any comments regarding this particular issue? Okay, you know, I just want to point out to the public too that we have read some misappropriation or some deviation from the CIP process in this conversation. That, this is my view, that Mr. Biggs is working within the adopted guidelines for expenditure of CIP funds and the process therein. And so there may be members of our community that find that untenable, but I believe in this case, there is no impropriety. So if there's further discussion, great. If not, I'd entertain a motion relative to this 6.5.
I move to approve 6.5, please.
It's been moved to approve. Do I hear a second?
Okay, I'll second.
It's been approved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please? Hey.
Councillor Youssef? Councillor Batine?
Yes.
Councillor Nosworthy?
abstain.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Bricky?
Yes. Thank you for that. Good discussion. And with that, we will roll back from my 35 pages of 217 this evening and get back to our agenda, which is... Apologies.
I believe it's 9.2.1.
Yeah. I'm still scrolling through the minutes. I didn't delete the minutes to make this more efficient. You're with me. Here we go.
I think it's page 53 of the document.
And I am just arriving there. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so our next item is Agenda Item 9.2.1, which is a public hearing to receive public testimony and consider a conditional property lease to St. Mark's Church through its Neighbors in Need Alliance, i.e. Nina, for the establishment of a homeless sheltering area on city-owned property adjacent to Greenmont Cemetery. And I might just reiterate, we will shortly, I'll open a public hearing, and at that time, I encourage you to provide public comments on the specific agenda item. To keep the meeting moving, meeting moving along, we are limiting comments to three minutes. You will be muted once you reach that limit, even if you're in the middle of sentence. So and also, please use the raise hand function if you're using Zoom app to indicate that you would like to provide that public comment. And as previously experienced, Mitchell will let you into the chat, and moderator will announce the next person to speak, and we'll unmute you at that time. Please be advised, this is a live television broadcast. Your video camera will show up when you speak. If you call in using your telephone, your phone number will be displayed. With that, we'll move on to the project summary, and can we have a member of staff introduce this topic?
Good evening, Council. Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager, Community Development. Certainly, the council is familiar with the efforts in the community to address some of the homelessness issues, and the NINA group through the Saint Mark's Church for the majority of two thousand and twenty has been very active, trying to establish a transitional camp to allow for some of the folks who currently reside on the Purple Cliffs property to kind of take a step forward regarding their situation for housing. The Purple Cliffs property is by and large unmanaged, other than some folks who are living there are taking care of the the location. Nina would like to kind of bring another level of service to a transitional camp in hopes of helping some of these folks that are unhoused, give them a better existence and provide them a a safe and warm place for the winter. I am not going to spend a lot of time reviewing the staff report. I believe we have something like sixty people that are here listening and want to participate in the conversation. The purpose of tonight was really for council to formally hear the proposal, allow for public testimony on the proposal. The staff report has been out since end of last week. Certainly, by the size of the packet, you're aware, and council has received many, many emails on the matter. I don't doubt you've received phone calls as well and that sort of thing. We did get additional comments in since the packet was released, but the by and large, the majority of those came through the city council email. Process that you've seen all of those emails, they will be entered into the public record. I also forwarded a couple of things today that you hadn't received yet, the the presentation that you're going to see shortly, and that also a couple of additional comments that didn't appear to have gone to council. So I think we're probably fairly up to date in terms of the comments provided. And what I would tell you is it's a fairly passionate issue, not unlike the one we were listening to earlier, in that a lot of effort has gone in by the NINA group, and a lot of the volunteers in the community have really stepped forward to put together what they feel is a very sound proposal. Nina has worked earnestly with this in the past. If you remember, we worked on the locker program earlier this year through Nina and Saint Mark's Church. We partnered on that project. This proposal, you're going to have a number of people present on shortly here when I'm talking. When what I'd like you to know, though, is we do have, and you've seen the comments, you've seen a variety of comments that are supportive, a variety of comments that are very concerned. I tried not to editorialize too much in the staff report, but I did call out some things that we heard from staff and others, both related to impacts, potential impacts of on the area, particularly the Greenmount Cemetery. If you recall, this property is also a parcel that was preserved back in the early two thousands as an open space parcel for viewshed protection. I did provide a few comments on that. You do have a memo from Parks and Rec that really articulates some of their concerns that they've experienced in the past with, particularly when we had the temporary shelter that was a result of the four sixteen fire. Certainly, this is a different project than than what was happening back then. Same population group, however, definitely a different proposal before you here. And what I'd like to do is allow Nina to step in here and talk about it. But what really the idea here for the public hearing is council gets to hear the public testimony. You you've seen the staff report, you've seen the formal submittal. And the the point for tonight is, do you want to provide a lease of some nature to the NINA group to use the Elks parcel for a transitional camp? And if you do, you will be directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance that would be read, first reading on the fifteenth of September. We would also have a draft lease for you at that time. If, in fact, you do choose to move in that direction tonight, as early as tomorrow, the Planning Division staff will be reaching out to the NINA group to to start the land use process with them. It's a a limited use permit, which is very much typically an administrative item. However, in this case, the preliminary review of the project indicates that there's probably a requirement for some variances, whether whether it's related to the road or development standards in order for them to move forward in a short order. But I can come back to you on the fifteenth if you choose to move this direction with an update as an administrative item to tell you what we have seen in the review process, which will give us an indication of what the next step would be. As you know, and you saw in the proposal, Nina would like to get queued up really at the end of this month, so they can prepare for the winter months ahead. So with that, I think what I'd like to do is I'll step away. I'll be here for questions after the presentation and possibly the public hearing. But from there, I would ask that the mayor invite in the the speakers, that Mitchell has got the list of those who will be participating.
Kevin, I ask you a question, just a procedural question. You mentioned the limited use permit application. Question number one, have they begun that limited use application at this point, this being the NINA group? And secondly, does that application, you alluded to variant, potential variances, does it allow for a public hearing? You said it was largely administrative in process. So if you could help us understand for those participants want to understand the future of this, what future comment they might be able to make. Will there be, does this go to Planning Commission, for example? Does this come back to council as an example? How does this proceed from here under a limited use permit application?
The first question was, has the formal application process begun? No. We received on the twenty-fourth of August the revised proposal and Nina, again, they've gone above and beyond to talk to neighbors, talk to the developments. As you know, Sparrow, the ten million-dollar transitional housing project, permanent support of housing project is about to put shovels in the ground next door. A lot of time has gone into talking to them. They needed to make some adjustments based on that proposal. So on the twenty-fourth, we received the package. Quite frankly, until we had direction from council as a whole to move forward with the project at that site, I was not inclined to engage a significant agency review, not only the city, but other agencies that participate in these reviews. So as I said, that that review would begin, if there's direction to move forward, we'll begin that this week. As for forgive me, what was the second, oh, in terms of public process moving forward? Typically, a limited use permit, if there's no variances required, would just be done administratively. In this case, the staff did as much of a preliminary review in-house as we could over the last week and found a number of things that will most like most certainly would require variance. That variance could go to the Board of Adjustments or to the Planning Commission. It makes more sense for it to go to the Planning Commission in this case. So what we would be doing, if we go this route, is that we would have it on the agenda for the Planning Commission meeting in September. And that would be the variance process. It would have a public hearing associated with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. And with that, whoever's representing Nina, if we can dial them in, Mitchell, that would be wonderful.
I have given everybody permission to speak. Carolyn, Donna, Jim, Paul, and Caroline.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mitchell. Kevin and I agreed that I would share a screen to show you our PowerPoint. Is now the right time to do that?
That would be great, Carolyn. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Here it goes. Let's see.
See what happens.
Okay, all right, and we'll just start from the beginning here.
We got it.
Yeah, thank you. I just gotta see what I can do to start from the beginning. Let's see, file. Whoops. No, wait a minute. Home. All right. I'm trying to, oh, here, slide show from beginning. Here we go. I've got it. Okay.
Okay. Just to remind our viewers that you are the applicant. So you have sufficient time to present your 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 product. So thank you. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Mayor Brookie, and I'd like to introduce Caroline Kinzer, please.
Good evening, everyone. I am Caroline Kinzer, and I live at forty Oakview Circle. Before moving to Durango, I spent twenty years involved with the Bethesda Center for the Homeless in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I served as chairman of their board twice, and I had the honor of having my name put on the building that houses the emergency night shelter for women. My husband and I moved to Durango fifteen years ago and got involved with MANA. I have served as chairman of the Board of MANA twice, and I continue to volunteer there. Tonight, it is now my honor to be a part of the presentation of work done by the Neighbors in Need Alliance regarding our mission to provide a safe place to sleep for those in need. Carolyn, next slide. In May of two thousand and nineteen, the city and county made the bold move to hire the Athena Group at a cost of seventy thousand dollars to create a strategic plan to address the issue of homelessness. It was an exhaustive, community-wide effort resulting in a plan that was adopted in February of this year. The two tier-one goals of that plan were number one, to provide an organized camp for the homeless, and number two, a navigation center to coordinate services for the homeless. With the advent of COVID nineteen, the interim working council that was created to advance the work of the strategic plan put the navigation center on hold and gave their support to the creation of the organized camp. Carolyn. So you'll probably remember that in September of two thousand and nineteen, your top goal was to support the implementation of the Athena Strategic Plan. When you approved that strategic plan, Nina responded to the city's request to achieve the goal of an organized and managed camp. We have organized volunteers, done extensive research on a managed camp model, and received a grant of ninety thousand dollars from the Colorado Foundation. Can you do the next slide? Is it getting, thank you. So now we're looking at some pretty dire statistics going forward. Based on a Corning Time survey in two thousand and nineteen showing the number of homeless people to be in the hundreds in Durango, and that the awareness provided by the Durango Herald of eight to ten deaths of homeless individuals annually, and then the economic impact of COVID nineteen going forward, we can see clearly that serving the unhoused remains an urgent issue for Durango. Carolyn. Statistics are showing us that unhoused are often the most vulnerable to COVID nineteen. A stable environment and access to basic sanitation services are the best ways to prevent the spread of the virus. With the closures of most public places in Durango, our public resources are available to the unhoused are now severely limited. Next. So who are the neighbors in need? When Nina was first organized in April of two thousand and nineteen, our mission was to provide a safe place to sleep for those in need. We were unable to provide a temporary shelter for the winter of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, but we have been able to begin a locker program that provides a secure place for unhoused to store their belongings. We have also implemented supportive services and provided emergency supplies for the unhoused. We now have a mailing list of over a hundred and thirty individuals and groups who are advocates for the unhoused. And thanks to the Colorado Health Foundation, we have been able to upgrade the campsites and enhance the sanitation and food delivery at the Purple Cliffs. Next. So now Nina is making some city requests. We want a lease for the Elkview site and expedited city processes so that we can open in November of two thousand and twenty. And just hearing some of Kevin's remarks, I'm delighted with some of that. We're asking for funding also from the joint sales tax to support capital improvements. And we're asking for extraordinary action by the council itself to direct staff to make this happen, since it was their top priority in two thousand and nineteen. Now, this might require an emergency health ordinance or declaration, but I think we can figure it out. So time is of the essence. Most funding is attached to COVID response. And there is no other option to open a program for this winter. Next. So the following presenters are going to explain to you all our proposal based on our extensive research of best practices across the entire country. Donna Rowe will now explain the staff model that we are proposing.
Good, Caroline, and good evening. My name is Donna Rowe. I live at two oh seven Via Vito in Durango. For twelve years, I volunteered at the at the VOA Community Shelter. I saw firsthand how many people were turned away and did not have a safe place to sleep. Homelessness is not a new problem for our community. I believe the time to address this problem is now. Elkview Community fills a gap in the continuum of services to address homelessness. After extensive review of best practice models, Nina determined that Camp Hope in Las Cruces, New Mexico, was the best option to serve La Plata County and the Durango community. Elkview will have a six-foot fence surrounding the community. Access to the community will be controlled. Residents and visitors will sign in and out. According to city code, there will be four bathrooms with toilets, sinks, and showers. Supportive staff will advise residents as to access to services and facilitate placement on housing waitlist. During the eighteen-month pilot phase, Nina will provide twenty-five established campsites with heavy-duty canvas tents, a full camp setup, and a lockable storage locker. All resident belongings will be kept inside the tents. An additional five tents will be available for emergency use during freezing weather. Residents will sign a code of conduct agreeing to move toward independent housing and adhere to behavioral guidelines. Unhoused individuals serve on Nina's steering committee and are a critical part of our planning. Next slide. Elkview will be staffed with one full-time equivalent and a peer camp manager for additional community support. In the first few months, additional contract staff will be provided. This model is proven and is working across the West. Residents will have opportunities for volunteer service on-site and in the neighborhood. The staffing model and program will be developed by consultant Jen Lopez and with input from Nicole Martinez at Camp Hope. Next slide. I'd like to speak to what Elkview is not. Elkview is not an effort to move all Purple Cliffs campers to town. It is not a camp for persons who do not want to build community or follow the Elkview Code of Conduct. It is not a program for unhoused community members who wish to only camp. And now Carolyn Hunter will speak to the Elkview site. And now Carolyn Hunter will speak to the Elkview site.
Thank you, Donna, and good evening, city councilors. Carolyn Hunter, nineteen-eleven Main Avenue, Durango. I'm a local architect and have practiced here since nineteen ninety-two. I currently sit on the city's design review board, but do not anticipate this project will come before them. If it did, I would recuse. The reason I joined Nina happened on New Year's Eve, twenty eighteen, at ten PM in a snowstorm. I witnessed an unhoused older woman being yelled at and kicked out of an open parking garage here in Durango. When I called the VOA Shelter and the Women's Shelter, they were both full, as they often are. Even our city police stated they cannot provide shelter in their jail, which would at least have been safe and warm. Durango is a caring community, and we can do better than this. The city's January twenty-eighteen study identified eleven possible sites. Of these, two had environmental problems, and two more were adjacent to Highway one sixty-five fifty, the busiest highway in West Slope, Colorado, and our visual gateway to Durango. We did walking tours of the other seven sites with leaders from our unhoused community in February this year. We looked at vehicle access, utility services, and how to minimize walking through any residential neighborhood. This Elkview site was their first choice for all these reasons, but especially the ability to walk to Manasou Kitchen without walking near or through any residential neighborhoods. This is not possible for any other site in Durango. This Elkview site will allow our twenty-five residents to walk to jobs in downtown Durango to transition back to a sustainable lifestyle. Housing Solutions of the Southwest is just beginning construction on their Asperro Housing to the north. We adjusted our site plan to accommodate their construction staging areas and are happy to work with them further. Here's, I'll show you where the staging, we allowed these staging areas, and they may want us to revise those, but that's what we have shown. We learned from our unhoused house leaders that they very much need a secured site for their own safety. This site will be surrounded by a six-foot-high solid, non-climbable fence with the only entry gates right here. Um, vehicular and pedestrian, this is the vehicular gate, this one below it is the pedestrian, located right at the guard shed, which is right here, which will be manned twenty-four-seven. The fire department will want an emergency gate. Also, we need an emergency man gate near it. There will be another six-foot-high visual screen fence along the east side of the Upper Cemetery Road. So people visiting the cemetery will look over this fence to the mountain peaks beyond and not downward into our community. The most, whoops, I've gotta go back. Oh, here we go. The most direct path to Manasou Kitchen, hang on, back. The most direct path to Manasou Kitchen is the, also the only one level enough to serve people in wheelchairs, and will have a six-foot-high solid fence on the Asperro and Homeward Bound side, and a three-foot-high open fence on the Hilltop side. This path ends at the south end of Avenida del Sol, right here, with Manasou Kitchen just beyond it. As you can see, this path goes only through the Social Services Campus and not through any neighborhood. Here are the restrooms and showers, the staff office, um, the, um, an outdoor food prep area with, um, grills and, and dishwashing facilities, and a warming tent. This warming tent is the tallest structure, so it's placed behind a mature group of trees to screen it from view. We have two zircons for onsite storage, and we have ample parking to meet city standards. The twenty-five yurts for our residents are located around the restrooms. Plus, we have five yurts for emergency guests when the community shelter gets full. There is one test solar ca, set, one test solar cabin, which will have southeast-facing windows to let the morning sun heat it up. It will look a lot like the guardhouse Jim Masikus will be showing you. Now, Jim Masikus will present his research for these structures and his compilation of the full construction costs.
Good evening. I'm Jim Masikus. I reside at four thirty-five Mesa Heights Drive in Durango. I've been an engineer for thirty-eight years, and I've conducted a detailed cost analysis involving many, uh, subject matter experts. As you can imagine, requiring numerous, uh, concessions and modifications. We've spent nearly five months developing the detailed budget. This will be an overview of the budget items included in Nina's proposal for the unhoused community at Elkview. Throughout the process, Nina has attempted to balance the needs, desires, with the cost codes and safety. With that said, I'd like to focus on the, uh, the twenty-five individual shelters and residents, as you see on the screen. We have decided to go with the round bell tents, or as Carolyn calls them, yurts. That will, uh, these yurts will optimize interior space, provide standing room, and ventilation. The canvas bell design provides for improved snow removal and higher wind resistance. The tents are fire-rated and will contain, as Donna said, a cot, storage locker, chair, fire extinguisher, and alarm, and buddy heaters for the heating in the wintertime. There will not be a, uh, smoke stack, as you see on here, on, on the screen. The key point here is to remember that the site is designed to provide a consistent and clean visual presentation with all the belongings placed inside the tents. As said, five smaller tents will also be added in case of emergency if other shelters are full. I'd like to briefly re, uh, reiterate the dual fencing model that Carolyn presented. It will provide both a complete viewshed barrier for the public traveling to Greymon Cemetery and a several camp, camp security. The Greymon fence, while being aesthetically pleasing, will work in conjunction with the other fencing, thereby providing security between the Elkview site and nearby developments. Give or take, we're going to install approximately two thousand and eighty-six feet of new fencing, which represents over twenty percent of the proposed budget. I assure you that the fencing model is a very robust one. With that said, I think the next slide, please. These are pictures of the, uh, the buildings that I'm gonna talk about. The first one is just a representation of what it would look like, but these are the kind of, uh, completed buildings that would be built. Nina would finish the inside. Down on the lower left-hand side is the warming dining hut. First of all, the city utilities will need to be extended, uh, to enter the camp from the north area. The six structures that will be installed within the, uh, security area are a guard shack with large windows that will be installed, thereby providing a three-hundred-and-sixty-site surveillance based at the entrance. An office for the site manager, as you heard, a prototype solar hut will be tested for viability and future consideration. The camp will have a metal outdoor picnic shelter with the gas grills. A twenty-four-by-forty-foot, as you see in the lower left-hand side, fire-rated poly-warming dining hut will be installed. Trash. A dumpster will be installed outside of the secured area for the residents. Frostproof water hydrants will be strategically placed inside the camp. And finally, the bathroom shower units, as Carolyn mentioned, will be constructed mid-camp with ADA-compliant units. The infrastructure investment is estimated at about, I'll go on to the next slide, at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This does not include any labor. Thank you. Which could add easily another hundred and sixty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars, or a total project cost of around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Our hope is that the unhoused and the community together will provide the labor to construct this camp. In addition to the infrastructure budget, Nina has estimated that the operating budget between seventy and eighty thousand dollars annually. After personally working with the unhoused worldwide, it is clear that they need an opportunity to develop, a hand up to a higher quality of life with dignity. The Elkview site represents just that option for Durango. It fills the gap between Purple Cliffs and affordable housing that can only be accomplished through gainful employment. The plan is set, and with your approval, we in the community are committed to immediate commencement. I ask you to please keep in mind, several of the items in this budget have longer lead times, requiring a decision as soon as possible for us to place in order. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Now I assume, uh, who's next in your presentation?
I am, Paul Roythmeyer.
Great, Paul, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Roythmeyer. I live at one-two-six-two Spring Road in Durango. I am the managing principal of an organization and leadership development consulting business. I've been doing survey research for over twenty-five years in industry and as part of my practice. As you saw on an earlier slide, the Elkview site was identified as the best of eleven possible locations. However, we knew we needed to talk to the neighbors. Next slide, please. Our objectives for reaching out to the, uh, surrounding neighborhood for feedback were to educate the neighborhood about our proposal, identify resident hopes, concerns, ideas, and remaining questions, and identify plans to mitigate concerns. Our approach included two methods for collecting feedback. First, we conducted a virtual meeting with Elavita residents, and we had about seven of the twelve residents attend and, and have a lively discussion. Second, we administered an online survey of the greater Crestview neighborhood, including Elavita residents. The survey participation rate was forty-six percent. We received sixty completed surveys out of a hundred and thirty residents invited using a neighborhood email distribution list. The survey consisted of open-ended questions. After reviewing our proposal, respondents were asked to identify their top three hopes and top three concerns in priority order, which you will see at the bottom of the next two slides. We also solicited ideas from respondents to address their concerns and ask them to identify any remaining questions they might have. A rigorous, time-intensive, and systematic content analysis was conducted on the open-ended survey comments to first understand the themes and then quantify the number of times respondents made comments consistent with the theme. Repeat comments by individuals were controlled for. You will see the number of residents who made comments consistent with each theme on the last row of the next two slides. We provided a summary of the results and action plans back to the community at the end of July. I'll now go over the summary of the survey results, but I'm happy to provide a copy of the raw survey comments that the city council is interested. Next slide, please. Almost half of all res, uh, respondents expressed hope for a path to help our neighbors in need successfully transition, including safety, security, housing, financial stability, access to jobs, and consolidated services, and transportation. Twenty-eight percent of respondents said they hope there will be no increase in crime and that the safety and security of the neighborhood will be maintained. Without being explicitly asked to express their support or disapproval, twenty-three percent said they hope the transitional community won't be located in their neighborhood. It should be mentioned that in the general comment section of the survey, twenty-five percent expressed either total support for the proposal or support with conditions, again, without being asked directly. These two data points suggest a mix of attitudes within the community toward the proposal, with a segment vehemently opposed, a segment that is strongly or somewhat supportive, and a large segment in the middle. Next slide, please. In terms of concerns, by far, the number-one concern of respondents is the possibility of more crime and less safety and security at resident homes and, and property and on the trails and in the parks. Uh, many respondents cited their negative experiences with the past camp near the neighborhood as their frame of reference. Other key concerns include more trash and waste on trails, in the parks, and around the neighborhood, loitering and bad behavior in parks and open spaces, and the possibility of drawing more homeless people to the neighborhood. Concerns identified by ten to fifteen percent of respondents included increased fire danger, lower home values, and a return to unauthorized camping, primarily in Overend Mountain Park. Next slide. Several concrete suggestions emerged from residents in the survey process, and they are the following: We commit to exploring a regular forum with representatives from Elkview and the surrounding neighborhood to provide neighbors with a voice and an opportunity to address issues as needed. We also want to explore a similar group to provide input on the development of the transitional community. We commit to exploring programs to give back to the neighborhood and the community to help reduce or possibly create a net, a net positive in terms of trash and provide services to the city and county in exchange for any funds provided. We also commit to help minimize, uh, the concentration of homeless individuals in the community. Nina is providing explicit support and advocacy for Purple Cliffs to remain in place here tonight. We commit to help minimize illegal camping and any changes in crime stemming from the Elkview community. We commit to support continued monitoring of Overend Mountain Park and exploring a strong partnership with local law enforcement. Finally, to help address any added loitering and, and negative behavior in the community from Elkview residents, we commit to follow our nationally-recognized Camp Hope model and plan closely with respect to the code of conduct, link to services, sanitation facilities, and a gathering area within the confines of the transitional community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Now, well, excuse me, Dean. This is Caroline. May I, go ahead?
Go ahead, Caroline. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. No, um, uh, about the Asperro Project of Housing Solutions of the Southwest. You can see from this slide that we have had several interactive, interactions with them, and we hope to continue to work closely with them in offering unhoused people the opportunity to become productive and independent, sir, citizens. Carolyn, next slide. And about Purple Cliffs. Thanks to the city, the county, and the Colorado Health Foundation, camping at Purple Cliffs has been legalized and stabilized. We endorse its remaining in place with a continuation, portable restrooms, trash pickup, food delivery, perhaps a bus stop nearby, and possibly a resident camp manager position. Next slide. So now what happens next? Well, the city council can fulfill its verbal commitment to establish a managed camp model and direct staff to provide extraordinary assistance to Nina to get access to the Elkview site and permission to be set up on the site by winter of twenty-twenty. This includes drafting a lease that will work for Nina and is not necessarily reliant on the approval of a third party. Of the sixteen terms listed in the outline of possible terms for the lease, twelve of them require direct intervention for a speedy process by the city staff. To be able to order the materials to construct the camp, to be able to open by November, we will also ask for a vote either on September fifteenth at the end of the second public hearing, or tonight, or in a special council, um, maybe in the following week, but obviously as soon as possible. And it is our hope that the city can support both the Asperro and the Elkview communities. Or, the city does not support Nina's access to the Elkview site, negating all previously discussed support for this model, and negates this action in the new homeless strategy, and Nina stops its efforts and returns ninety thousand dollars in resources that we have already received. Slide number twenty-five. And this is a sad slide, but we dedicate the effort to, to propose this camp to our brothers and sisters who have died on the streets of Durango since we started this effort, and all those before them. So we thank you for letting us present our model, and if you have questions, I don't know when the right time for that is, but we're ready and willing if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, and, uh, other presenters. Appreciate it very much. Uh, and, uh, with that, uh, uh, it, it's to ask councilors if you have any questions of staff at this point, or, uh, I can open the public hearing, and I'd like to have a little discussion around the timeliness of that, uh, should we, uh, given the fact it's, uh, eight-twenty-one. As was previously discussed, uh, we, we have established a, a two-hour limit previously for this discussion. Whether the council would entertain that limit, that would take us to approximately eight-thirty, or, excuse me, ten-thirty in the evening. Uh, and, uh, uh, does not really allow us significant time for further discussion and, uh, and action on this item. So, uh, that's the reason I, the only reason I would, uh, suggest any limitation of public comment at this time. Uh, but, uh, uh, first of all, is there any questions for staff at this, at this point in time? Typically, we ask staff questions after public comment, but, um, okay, see, uh, Chris?
Well, if you want to do it in this order, I do have a couple of questions for them. Um, I noticed in their presentation- I noticed in their presentation, in the staff presentation, there was some question about the letter that was written by Aspero and entitlement issues and so forth, and I just wanted to hear Kevin comment on that, or perhaps somebody from Aspero relative to, you know, how, how far away are we from resolution of those issues? Because that's an important cog in the wheel of navigating homelessness in our community, and I want to make sure that their entitlements are not in jeopardy relative to any action we would take with a lease.
Counselor Patina, I don't have any additional information from a staff perspective. We received their most recent letter on Thursday just prior to the staff report, it was included in the staff report. I would defer to either Nina or the Aspero representatives, if there's any here, to address that, maybe during the their portion of the public comment or feedback.
Thank you, Kevin. If there's no other comments, I have just a couple of observations for the council as well as the public. The issue before us this evening is approval of a lease agreement, which is not approval of a lease agreement, it's approval to for council to give direction to city staff to prepare a lease agreement that is not existing at this point in time. The purpose of a lease agreement would to be, was in my mind, was to allow the proponent, Nina, to enter into the planning process to, like any other developer, which has a requirement to show, demonstrate control of the property in some form, that being in this case, a lease agreement with the owner, which is the city of Durango. So, this is, our action this evening is not meant to be approval or disapproval of the project, but simply giving approval to give direction to staff to initiate the creation of a lease, a conditional lease at that. Because if a, if a, if a project fails to meet the conditions of the the planning requirements, then, just like any other real estate deal, it would die for lack of compliance with city standards. So, that's number one. The new issue that I've heard this evening is the advocacy, as was stated eloquently by Caroline and Jim, I believe, as well, that this is not intended by Nina to be a replacement for Purple Cliffs. I thought that was kind of quite, I was going to ask that question, but it was answered for me in the presentation, that clearly that is a stated function of, that this camp is not a replacement for that camp. Which brings me to our previous conversations with our cohort in this effort, and a co-sponsor of the camp would be the La Plata County and Board of County Commissioners, who, who have expressed to me that this is, it has been their intent to be able to close Purple Cliffs as a result of moving to this camp. And that's no longer part of the equation, I think that's, you've gotten to make that clear to the Board of County Commissioners. Because that camp is located on the, on the, on county property currently. It's funded mutually with joint sales taxes, as everybody involved in it knows, between the city and the county. And so if Purple Cliffs, as a result of the creation of this new camp, is going to continue to exist, it not only involves our funding, long-term funding, by both the city and the county, and support of both projects, which is not part of our earlier discussions that I'm aware of. And I did verify that with at least one county commissioner earlier this afternoon, who would have been totally shocked to have heard the parts of the presentation that we heard this evening relative to Purple Cliffs. They're anticipating, it's my belief, that there would be a full closure of Purple Cliffs as a result of this replacement camp with better, acknowledged better management, better control, better, all things better than what currently exists at Purple Cliffs. So, and if councilors have other concerns, please express them now. That's was two that I, that I just wanted to respond to after listening to the presentation, and which is a great presentation, by the way. And I do have some specifics when we get to costs involved in the project, as was presented by Jim. And what specifically the ninety thousand dollar grant that Nina has received, what that would be spent for versus the projected hundred and sixty thousand dollars of initial materials supplemented by another hundred and sixty thousand dollars of potential labor costs for the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar. I know that doesn't add up, but that's the numbers we heard for creation of this camp at Elkview. So, I think we need to know a little bit about the money so that the city council, as well as the county, is prepared to make that investment. We certainly have said that we would, and the source would be the joint sales tax fund, but the amounts were not specified. And so, I think with that, is there any other council questions? Chris?
Yeah, Mayor, I just said, whatever appropriate time, I'd wanted to hear from our police chief relevant to the issue that you just brought up about the potential of two camps existing simultaneously, and any other issues that, you know, are going on currently with the existing camp. I think it would be valuable to hear what he has to say.
I think that that would be good initial information for us to hear in in consideration for all public comment as well. Chief, do you have any thoughts on that?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council of the City.
Chief, we can't quite hear you, you're either on mute or you've got a bashful voice, one of the two. I know it's not a bashful voice.
Does that work a little bit better?
So barely, barely.
We'll try the external speaker on my computer, is that working better?
Much, much, thank you.
Okay, outstanding. So, yeah, I think, I think it's a very well-thought-out project for these twenty-five encampments that are going to be in the city limits. That will just be another community that we will figure out a strategy in order to police, just like we do any other neighborhood within the city itself. It's not necessarily the encampment at the Elkview property that I'm concerned about. It's because I think that's probably potentially going to be potentially managed, I think it was well-thought-out. It's all of the additional people that will be displaced or will be attracted to that camping area that potentially are going to cause those problems. When the original camps from that area moved down south to the Purple Cliffs area, we saw a reduction in overall crime activities in other areas that we had to police in that particular area down to District Two, which is the Walmart and the Boto area. And since that time, we've seen quite a bit of an increase in crime there specifically. But, you know, if we're talking seventy-seven camps in the Purple Cliffs area, this is only going to build by twenty-five, and that's going to be fifty other displaced people, they're going to have to find some other place to potentially occupy. So, again, you know, the police department right now is stressed based off the call volumes that we're receiving as now, and this would just continue to stretch our resources even further, regardless of where it is, if it stays where it is, or if it's in two different locations, so it's just displaced it out even further.
So, so you would advocate for keeping Purple Cliffs in place just to sort of dilution is the solution, is that what I'm hearing, to some extent?
I think we need a place for them to be, I'm not sure exactly what that partnership would look like. But just what I'm saying is that I'm not really worried about the camp itself at the Elkview property being being well-managed. I believe it's just going to attract some the outside of that that's going to be a potential problem for us, as we've seen in the past, historically.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, I appreciate it very much. And with that, I don't want, I don't want to, we're definitely here for public comment, so I think we should probably get into that as well, and would invite any county commissioners to join us as well, that might be listening in, hopefully. And, because it, definitely an issue of joint and both citizen and county interest, so with that, I open the, I open the public hearing, and I know that we have a number of folks ready for three-minute spiels, and if I might be able to say, let's, let's limit it to two hours and see where we're at, where we get to with this, hopefully we will get some good public comment for us to consider. And, but we do have to have time to make good decisions here this evening, hopefully.
Mitchell? Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. I do see quite a few people in the attendee list with their hands raised. First on the list, I'm going to allow Doug to speak. Doug, please unmute yourself, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Doug Lyon, I live at nine forty East Fifth Avenue. And I'd like to thank the council for, well, what's some pretty hard work at all the time, and certainly this evening, given the nature of some of the comments. I'd also like to thank the Nina group for the hard and heartfelt work that they've done on this project. At the same time, I, I, I'm going to have to oppose the project, because I don't believe it's a compatible land use, and I don't think it's compatible with fiscal probity in our community. First, the land use. As we, as we think about going up that hill to the, to the cemetery, which I do pretty often, really, because my mother's buried up there, as you round the hairpin turn, that camp will be very visible, it will not, certainly not be behind a six-foot fence, because the road rises sharply after you pass that hairpin turn. And as some of you know, I, I was visiting my mother about a month or so ago up at Greenmont Cemetery, which I, it's, I regard it as a sacred place in our community. And we have so many loved ones up there. And I was visiting her, and about five feet from her grave was a guy sleeping on the ground. And I'll use that term generously. And I, it's unsettling, certainly for me, and even more unsettling than, than my experience, it's, it's the risk that older people take when they're visiting loved ones. Because you remember, the population of people that visits Greenmont Cemetery to visit the graves up there is frequently elderly, elderly and infirm. My own father goes up there to visit my mother, and I would not like to think that he might be accosted by the guy sleeping next to my mother's grave in the final moments before he passed out. He goes up there and he walks around the flat area, and I'd like to think that his safety is paramount. And in order to do that, we have to, we have to be clear-headed about the population we're attempting to serve here. Second, two homeless camps, there's going to be one at Purple Cliffs and one at the Elkview Parcel. I think the Purple Cliffs is adequate. If, if we go forward with the plan at the Elkview Parcel, the cost of this will, 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 will be with us forever, that's for sure, and it will be a non-dominimus, dominimus cost. It will be a non-dominimus cost. And I think that we have many other expenses in our community without tackling this one. So, thank you very much, and by the way, ten seconds left. I know you've taken some, particularly, I think, vicious comments this evening. When you get a chance, go home and Google Teddy Roosevelt Citizenship in a Republic Man in the Arena Speech. It'll make you feel better. Thank you very much for everything you do, I'm done.
Thank you, Doug Lyon, and appreciate the timeliness, and by the way, Mitchell does hold up a stopwatch, just to give you a counting of what time is available. And thanks for, Doug, for being punctual, and thanks for our future speakers to keep an eye out on that resources to keep you punctual, thanks. With that, Mitchell, next speaker.
Next on the list is Jeff. Jeff, I've allowed you to speak, please unmute yourself and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Jeff Sutherland, I live at three-nine-six Clear Spring Avenue, Durango, Colorado. Mayor, brookey, councilors, and attenders, I'd like to say thanks to each of you for your service to our community. Can't imagine all the hours you put in, and I'm very appreciative of that. Nina, amazing job on your presentation tonight, so thoroughly considered and trying to, to connect all of the different areas together. I've lived in Durango for three years, I own a business here. I'm on staff at Durango Vineyard Church, and I'm a board member at Manham. I've been working at the Purple Cliffs, maybe can answer some of those questions there since October last year, where we began providing heaters for the unhoused and refilling, regiving them propane each week to help them make it through the coldest parts of the winter. And we feel like it was definitely an effort that was worthwhile, and we believe we reached our goal of not losing anybody to actual hypothermia or those types of things. The Elkview location, I'd like to just talk for just a second, that says that if you've been involved in this issue very long, you know that it's a very difficult place to try to find to house any number of folks that are unhoused, and that watching the processes and being a part of it for a little while with the Nina side of it, it felt hopeless. You know, too many variances, too many inabilities to be able to find a place that's acceptable. And to finally have one place that seems viable and the research that's gone into it, I hope that you'd really give that a lot of consideration, and one that would help a separate population from the Purple Cliff side of it. So I've spent every Saturday almost since October out serving in that area, and if you've spent some time there, you'll know that there's a wide variety, some are out there because of addiction, some are there because of mental illness, some are there because they just want to be free. And those that are definitely free aren't going to be the ones that go to the Elkview location because they want to be in a managed camp. I think what you're going to see at the Elkview location are people who feel like security is important to them, and that security is going to come through gates and guards and rules and guidelines and all those types of things, as well as people who are dependent on being close, maybe transportation is an issue for them, or they're physically unable to move about the way that you'd expect, say example, from the Purple Cliffs. So, in consideration of having two locations, which I'm interested, I was very surprised to see that that was the first time being brought up. I, I think that two locations still makes a lot of sense, I understand the cost of that may be in consideration, and maybe there's some ways to adjust that or to bring other folks in. I feel like it's time to stop kicking the can down the road and stick up for the all people that called Durango their home. We should serve them with dignity and compassion and give them the greatest opportunity to reach an equitable position in our city. We can take a huge leap forward in serving all people of Durango with your confirmation of the Elkview site and reapplying funding back to the navigation center at all, haven't heard much of that, but that was a priority from the PATH survey as well. I'd also say it's important to voice our support in encouraging a quick resolution to all of this. Winter is coming, and it's not going to change for that for us if we decide to just slow that down.
Jeff, thanks for your comments, and you're
Great.
a bit of time, but thanks, and appreciate your comments, next speaker, please.
Next one on the list is Shannon. I've allowed you to speak, please unmute yourself, give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Shannon, I don't want to give my address in a public forum. I live in the Crestview neighborhood. I was one of the members of PATH, one of the community members who was on PATH. Spent a lot of time advocating for our neighborhood and for the, this area to move the camp that was in the Durango Mountain Park, where I and many of my neighbors, females, hike. I was threatened on the trails when that camp was there, there was human feces on the trail. I think in our neighborhood, we thought we would not have to revisit this again. And so, I'm here to oppose the camp for some of the same reasons that Mr. Lyons stated. I don't believe that it's fiscally responsible for joint sales tax money to go and support this camp. We already have a camp in existence. It sounds like a lot of money for twenty-five people. If any of you have been past Snyder Park recently, I recent, I have a scooter that I use to get around town, and I recently rode past Snyder Park on my scooter, and the entire ride past it, it just reeked of urine, it was like, it was like Bob's John's had spilled their contents past the entire park. past the entire park. We don't feel safe about having this in our community. Environmentally, it has been a disaster having these camps in the community. We saw the amount of trash that was hauled out of the mountain park camp. I've driven past Purple Cliffs. I've seen Purple Cliffs, and it is an environmental disaster. I'm not opposed to continuing with Purple Cliffs. But how many camps are we going to set up? And if nothing else, if you don't care about the Crestview and Elavita communities, we are a tourist community and putting a homeless camp in the middle of our town, it seems irresponsible. This is all based on New Hope out of Las Cruces. Well, what you guys may not know is that New Hope Camp in Las Cruces is in an industrial area. It is not in the middle of town where our tourists walk, they use the trail. This camp is near within several feet of three hotels that charge in excess of three hundred dollars a night during the summer months. And tourism is the lifeblood of our community, as is the property taxpayers. So I want you not to to approve this camp in this area and leave it as Purple Cliffs. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shannon. As with all comments, I hate to interrupt, but I do want to give either a thirty-second or a ten-second warning. And I'll do that to interrupt the speaker. It's not meant to be nasty. I just want to keep it on time. Thanks. And with that, the next speaker, please.
Looks like the next one on the list is Jennifer. I've allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Zrata, and I live in the Crestview neighborhood. I have lived in Durango for over twenty-three years, since I was a young doe fresh out of undergrad. So I've now lived here more than half of my adult life. And I am opposed to the Elkview Transitional Camp for many of the safety issues and threats to my neighborhood and community that are very, very real for many of us. These are concerns that relate to substance abuse, crime, mental health, as well as wildlife conflicts, and the threat of wildfire, as well as traffic and vehicle pedestrian conflicts. These are all things that were deemed enough to for the illegal camp at the cemetery for our previous city's councillors, our county commissioners, and our sheriffs to have it moved, and it was the impetus for starting Purple Cliffs. So I know that this is based, this proposal is based on Camp Hope. But again, if you Google Camp Hope, if you do your own research, it's not even close to a residential area. And it's not on city land or any other state or federal public land. So as city councillors, I feel you have an opportunity here to serve all of the people and recognize these safety concerns. Again, we also have a shelter next to Manor that is often underutilized. Currently, right now, there are only nine people there. It can accommodate thirty-seven people when we're not in coronavirus. And during coronavirus and social distancing, they can accommodate about twenty-five. If it's not ideal or perfect, why are we not using that ninety thousand dollars to work with the VOA, to collaborate with them, to expand it or make it into what we need? I think the the issue that the chief brought up about Purple Cliffs and two shelters brings us to a larger problem, and that is the location of Manor. And we brought this up three years ago, and it's been talked about, and it's controversial. I think it is time to move Manor, to have that as an option, just like with the wastewater treatment plant. Let's find the appropriate location to help people. If Purple Cliffs quickly went from twenty-five or thirty people to seventy, and now we might have two camps, why not find the best location so we can serve both populations of people in a way that is appropriate? This project has not been vetted well with the Crestview community. We have not been invited to meetings. And let me just say that survey as a researcher and statistician is very flawed. And finally, all of these things with a half a mile fence and white yurts and water resources, all of these things need to be addressed NIPA. So there is an environmental rule because this is very important. Because this project is using federal monies, there is a federal nexus here. So this project needs to comply with NIPA and go through that environmental regulatory process that would address visual, not just wildlife soils, socioeconomics, wildlife and wildfire threat and not just meat and all those things. So I really hope that you would consider that.
Thank you. I apologize, Jennifer. We need to move on. And feel free to document any remaining items in writing to council. And thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Next on the list is Sarada. I've allowed you to speak. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarada Levenworth at one three eight Valley View Drive, Bayfield, Colorado. And I'm on the call representing our organization, Axis Health System. Axis has been a part of the strategic planning process around how we as a community want to address homelessness issues for many years, particularly the last few years when city council and our county and so many partners have worked together to come up with strategy. And we are currently key partners to both Nina and the Asparrow Project. We plan to do service provision at both locations and lend our support and expertise to both projects to the highest extent that we can. And I think over the past number of years, as we've all worked together, we've realized that it takes multiple approaches to address these issues. They're complex. We need permanent supportive housing. We need transitional communities like we're talking about right now. We need emergency shelter. We need a range of options. And the Asparrow and Nina projects are not mutually exclusive. They are projects that can work together. Through committed collaboration, we've got to have the right people at the table, and we have that. We have the leadership available now through Nina to have the right people at the table. We, as a community, over the last couple of years identified that we have to have leadership. We have to have a plan. We have to have research done. We have to have funds available. And with all of those things in place, we as a community are willing to take a leap and establish a transitional community like Elkview. And we now have those things through Nina. We're in a really special place right now. We're in a place we haven't been. And we need a location. And as our city staff and our county staff can attest, finding that location is really tough. There's no perfect place. We've looked at a million, and we've all pulled our hair out around it. There's no perfect place. But there is the right time, and now is the right time. We don't want to see ourselves in November and December with the snow flying and all of us back in the hundredth meeting talking about where to put this and how to manage and how to make it happen. We've got a chance right now to make it happen. And Axis is one of the many, many organizations ready to step forward and make it successful with everything we possibly can to put in place. So I encourage our council to strongly consider approving this lease and just know that that commitment is shared. What was that, Dean?
Ten seconds, five seconds here.
What about my last three seconds? Just kidding. I appreciate all of your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And sorry to cut anybody off, especially in their final moments. I've I've got the amazing technology of texting. Do have two public leaders being city county commissioners that would like to provide some comment. And with that, Mitchell, I'm going to ask that you allow County Commissioner Julie Westendorf to enter our chat, followed by Glenn Lackle, if we could, have been listening in. Normally, this is public comment, but we'll give our elected officials a little priority to voice their comments.
Okay, I I have allowed Julie to speak, so if you can, please give us your name and address for the record. We have three minutes.
I am Julie Westendorf. I'm a La Plata County Commissioner. Address is eleven oh one East Second Avenue in Durango. That's our business address. I didn't have no intention of being of cutting anybody, cutting in line, so I apologize for that.
You're fine, Julie.
All right, thank you. So I I'm ending up going to have to speak on something I had no idea I was going to have to talk on today. And that, but I won't I won't lead with that. First, I want to just say that I'm not speaking on behalf of the board as a whole. I what I'm going to share are themes or comments that I've heard from the board in the past. If I'm saying something that's just mine, I'll be clear about that. I've actually been to Camp Hope, so I think I might be one of the few people attending that that has done that. And I have supported a managed camp in our community since visiting that. I believe that I don't want to speak specifically as to the Elkview property because I I don't I believe that's a city council choice, but I think the Social Services Campus was designated for providing social services. And there is already a soup kitchen in Manor and a shelter, so and a halfway house. So so I think that's important to consider the context. I want to say that this camp, as a managed camp, is not like other camps we've had. It's not like Purple Cliffs. And it's not like what was in the tech center. I appreciate and thank Nina for responding to the call that most specifically I recall coming from Dick White, former mayor of Durango, and Nina answered the call. Want to express that we can, as a county, I I can say that we want to continue to cooperate and support the efforts for a safe, well-managed camp. And I think Nina is here to help us find those solutions. I believe a self-managed, I believe a safe, well-managed camp also empowers your jurisdiction as well as ours to strengthen enforcement of other laws that we have to address conduct that we can't, that we don't support. I'd like to turn the council's attention to the email of Paul Maruzak, who proposed an eighteen-month test drive. I think that has some merit to it. Lastly, I want to say that for the first time I heard tonight that Purple Cliffs was in play as continuing. And I can tell you that that Purple Cliffs was not and currently isn't intended to be a permanent use. It is not a good use. It was not moved. The camp at the tech center was not moved to reduce crime. It was moved because there was a fire. The four sixteen required that evacuation. We moved people to a less, an area with less fire risk, but that also contains fire risk. Traffic continues to be inappropriate for traffic.
Great, thank you, Julie. And I assume that we will have, I'm reminded that only one of the county commissioners can speak at a time thus constituting a public meeting if two of you show up at the same time. So I think we would enjoy having public comment in written form or some other form from, obviously, we'll have this discussion later with with the county commissioners as well. So we look forward to any other things you have to help us make this decision.
I hope that there's one on our agenda soon, Dean. That was our expectation.
That is, that is, I'm aware of that, and that's our big financial discussion with becoming within our joint county commissioner, city council meeting soon. With that, I'd like to, Mitchell, ask for another, another participant.
Yeah, the next person on our list is Elizabeth. Elizabeth, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Elizabeth Saltine. I'm Director of Housing Solutions. And Housing Solutions is a co-developer of Asparrow. So I'm really speaking more on behalf of Housing Solutions. Asparrow itself and the partnership put together a list of concerns, which we have met with Nina a couple of times. This was brought to our attention a little over a month ago, I believe. And we've done our best, but it's really the heat of getting our project off the ground. So we've done our best to try to, you know, try to find creative solutions to the issues because we share the goals of Nina. I think absolutely in terms of trying to house people safely, you know, winter is coming. So we have more in common than not. So it does put us in a difficult position, but I want to raise our concerns because I think that they're real. And our executive board as Housing Solutions has been clear about the investment of Asparrow for our organization has been huge. I mean, not just in terms of the number of years, which is seven or eight years that we've been working on at Manpower, but in terms of a regional-sized agency taking on such a large financial project. Everyone in our in Housing Solutions and the board, they sign off on financial guarantees. And so there's a risk of investment. One of the factors that none of us predicted, and it's complicated, all of our challenges, was COVID. And it's really dramatically increased the financial risk of Asparrow just by, for example, you know, prices of the project itself, construction, architecture for Accounting for a New World, et cetera. So we took on the risk. We're continuing with the risk, but everyone is very nervous. And we are absolutely committed to its success. And so any other additional factors are really making our board and our investors nervous about the project's success. Some of the real specifics we outlined in the letter as co-developers, but again, I'm speaking more on behalf of Housing Solutions. Vehicle and pedestrian access are a definitive concern, safety and security. We're still looking for, we're talking about a managed campground, but we're looking for an experienced professional management agency of some sort that isn't outlined with an operating budget to support that. And I guess the community's support is the only thing I want to end with, which it took us seven years to really work with the neighbors and really listen and come up with solutions to their legitimate concerns. And we're can, I guess our concern is by having a campground next to apartments that we are, you know, we told the neighbors that essentially housing was a better option than than camping for the neighborhood, and we'd fully support the neighborhood. And so I was also somewhat surprised, you know, four, six weeks ago, when this issue came back to the table at that point. So we do want to support Nina and their efforts, but we're very concerned about the location during, especially during our construction period, which is, you know, twelve months predicted, but with COVID, you know, I'm I'm thinking, you know, twelve to eighteen-month period is something we should at least plan for. So I do have significant concerns on behalf of our board and our executive committee.
Thank you, Ms. Saltine. Next speaker, please.
Next on the list is Marcy. Marcy, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address, and you have three minutes. Marcy, it looks like you are still muted. Marcy, you should see a pop-up on your screen asking you to unmute yourself.
Perhaps we can move on to the next one and catch Marcy.
Marcy did unmute herself. Can we hear you?
You can, you can hear me, but I am only listening. I do not have the opportunity to speak.
Okay, I will not raise your hand then. Here we go. Next person on the list is Richard. Richard, I've allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, actually, this is Timothy Sargent. I am a resident and facilitator of the Purple Cliffs homeless community or the unhoused community. I want to thank you, first of all, for meeting tonight on this subject. I want to also thank the city council, the county commissioners, and the county sheriff's department on making the bold move a year ago to establish this community. It took quite a lot of effort, especially considering It took quite a lot of effort, especially considering in face of two ACLU letters threatening legal action. We have taken a bare hillside and turned it into a viable working community with kitchen, community centers, shower, solar chargers, all within constraints of county rule. We are self-policed and self-managed. Can it be better? Yes. We work on very little financing. Everything's been done through the cooperation and compassion of people like Nina, the Community Christian Outreach, the Vineyard Church, and individuals. This camp is viable. It works. It's not the best. It will not be the best. It's not designed to be the best. It's designed to be a place for people to find a place to sleep and not have to move. The camp that's proposed in Elkview is another camp necessary for those people who are getting ready to face homelessness in a very near future. Today is September first. Rent is due, and many people have no money. They received their last check at the end of July. The restriction on eviction was lifted in August. It is September first. People are going to lose their homes. There's no way around it. Homelessness is going to increase. Whether you like this idea or not is regardless. It it's going to be necessary. I I believe we have the ability and the faith and the strength and the resilience to do this. We can find solutions. We can. I want to thank you for your time. And and once again, we can do this. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Timothy, uh, and uh thanks for finding uh an avenue to reach us this evening. Uh, and uh, with that, next speaker, please.
Uh, next person on the list is Peter. Uh, Peter, I've allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Uh, Peter, you are still muted.
Sorry, uh, there we go. Hi, uh, Peter May Ostendorf from two thousand nine Forest Avenue in Durango. Uh, so yeah, to begin with, I just wanted to thank all of you, members of council and staff. Uh, I'd also like to thank Nina and its volunteers for their thoughtful and well-intentioned proposal. Uh, my family and I live in the Crestview neighborhood ourselves. Uh, we've lived there since twenty twelve, and we understand the concerns many of our neighbors have presented over the proposed camp. Uh, two summers ago, illegal camping in Overend Park and spillover from the Tech Center camp posed very real health, safety, and environmental risks, not just to the housed, but also to the unhoused. Um, but Nina's proposal is a valid attempt to specifically avoid those conditions and adapts a best-practice model for transitional housing. It's required countless hours to identify a suitable site and integrate community concerns. Uh, and it comes none too soon, given the potential for millions of our country's citizens to be evicted amidst the pandemic. So Durango must be prepared for a surge in homelessness. This is, as Tim mentioned, is is absolutely, you know, a given. Um, bolstering our social service campus with additional capacity is highly appropriate and aligned with our values to protect the most vulnerable in our community during this unprecedented time. Uh, I'd recommend that councillors move for a draft lease to simply allow the project to proceed apace. In parallel, I would hope that Nina could fortify their plans with additional details on uh the specific code of conduct that residents would be held to, um, and importantly, alignment with the Asparrow development. Um, this will hopefully allow the project to move forward on schedule while allowing time for the concerns of other community stakeholders to be met. Um, and I just want to finish up saying, you know, it it is easy to muster opposition to housing for a population that is, at best, invisible and at worst unwanted. Um, but it takes real hard work and creativity to tackle this controversial issue. I think Nina's proposal gives you, as civic leaders, as good an opportunity as there is to really take the lead on this, um, and I hope you don't close the door on that opportunity. Uh, thanks for your consideration. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Peter. Next Peter, next uh speaker, please.
Uh, next one on the list is Jen. Jen, I have allowed you to speak. Uh, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, uh, council. This is Jen Lopez. I'm at two twenty-four Hermosa Circle. I'm going to try to use a minute and a half. You've heard from me multiple times in the last year and a half. I just want to reiterate a couple of points here. Um, one, that, as you all know, we've never done a managed community, so I want to move us away from camp language. I think it confuses everyone. This is a managed community based on best practices. The second thing I want to point out is, um, I work uh statewide, and we have seen this model pop up in five communities this year because of COVID. It is becoming a best practice. It's recognized by the CDC. So when I hear the neighbors talk about um smelling urine and all, uh, you know, those are real issues because people don't have a place to um for personal hygiene. We're seeing it all over the state, and so um, you know, this model really addresses people's needs while they're living on the streets. Um, we want to work with the neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor. We are also committed to working with Asparrow. I think we can address all their concerns. Um, I work in permanent supportive housing. I created the state model. We can work with them. And so I just, you know, uh, have faith that we can come to a consensus with them, um, I think, uh, over time. And finally, I'll say, uh, we put out a sign-on letter this weekend just to see uh how many other folks are interested in supporting Nina, and we had sixty-nine people sign up over the weekend. I'll send that um email to you all uh tonight, later tonight. But uh this is a, again, it's a best practice. We've been talking about it for a year and a half. If we don't do this now, what's our backup plan? I don't think we have one, and I really hate the idea that we might lose this opportunity to do what we've been talking about for a year and a half. The final thing I'll say is there are, there's funding available. We are not looking for the city and county to fund this thing on its own. We have ideas for fundraising. We can't go after more funds until we have access to the site. So thank you very much, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mitchell.
Uh, next person on the list is Lynn. Lynn, I have allowed you to speak. Uh, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mitchell. My name is Lynn Schaller. I live at ten ninety-nine Main Avenue and in Durango, and I strongly support the Elkview camp plan and ask the city to move it forward. For years, Durango has been challenged, like most every other city in America, to implement a program that provides real solutions to part of the plight of the unhoused. To address some of the other concerns stated today, there is no area in Durango that is going to hold a hundred people in the same place. This is not an illegal camp. There is no industrial area that we've been able to find for years that would uh serve this purpose. Studies and committees have come and gone, um, and sites that have been suggested have had people say, not in my backyard, but Durango is better than that. The city and county asked the faith-based community to step up to assist, and Nina did just that with PATH and Athena and community input. Now is the time to take action for the next step to create this transitional camp before another winter arrives. This is important to me because I do not want another unhoused person to die. If we have ten people, ten unhoused people that die each year in Durango, we have failed as a community. I care because their lives matter too. Dalai Lama said compassion is not a luxury, it's a necessity. It's human nature to care for others, not just the people that we care about in our circles, but also for those who struggle and need our help. It's important to me that these human beings enjoy more than mere survival each day, but to receive the fundamental need of some degree of safety, a bit of comfort, ease, and predictability, knowing where their home is tonight, where they can sleep, sheltered from the winter scorn, and where they can literally take the burden off their backs. Caring for human beings in our community is our legacy. So let's do this now. We have the foundation based upon the success of Camp Hope's model. Let's be courageous with open hearts and the will to let people live. So I ask you to please approve the lease for this transitional camp and let the project begin. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mitchell Schiller, and uh next uh next speaker, please.
Next one on the list is Kiara. Kiara, I've allowed you to speak. Uh, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mitchell, Mayor, Mayor Brookie and city council members. My name is Kiara Amoroso. I presently reside on Animus View Drive. However, I did live in the Crestview neighborhood for over twenty years. As a volunteer, I have been working with Nina, law enforcement, and individuals residing at Purple Cliffs to address safe temporary housing for those in need. As a longtime Durango resident and past employee of both the Durango Community Shelter and Access Health System, I know firsthand the benefits of safe temporary housing. It provides people with respite from the daily struggle of figuring out how to keep themselves and their belongings safe. This in turn allows them the freedom to meet with local support agencies who will help them address immediate needs such as food, clothing, medical care, and mental health care, as well as opportunities for employment, education, and permanent housing. I see people I know who are given the opportunity for safe respite every day in Durango. They are employees and managers of stores we frequent, skilled trainspins and women building, repairing, and maintaining our homes and neighborhoods, children, and even young adults that have graduated from our schools and colleges. They've also, they are also volunteer peer advocates sharing their experience of homelessness to help support and guide others going through similar circumstances, and they are members of our faith-based communities. As other speakers have said before me, I have participated in countless forums and coalitions over the last many years, designed to address homelessness in Durango. In my opinion, this is the first time we've had the proper research, the planning, the opportunity, the drive, the funding, and the volunteer manpower to establish a successful, safe, well-managed temporary, temporary housing site. Please allow us the chance to provide this place of respite to those in our community in need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Amoroso. Uh, and uh, Mitchell.
Uh, next one on the list is Betsy. Betsy, I've allowed you to speak. Uh, please introduce yourself or unmute yourself, and then give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Betsy Morris, and I live at four zero two Hillcrest Drive in Durango, and uh Mayor Brookie and city council members, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. Since February of two thousand and two, soon after moving to Durango, my husband and I began volunteering at Manah Soup Kitchen. During this time, we've had the pleasure of interacting with Durango's unhoused community. As the years have gone by, I have come to regard many as personal friends. Sadly, in the past two years, I have observed an unhoused community in greater need than ever. In January of two thousand and nineteen, I became involved with Neighbors in Need Alliance, NINA, an organization which is composed of individuals from faith-based groups and others who share a desire to create a safe place to sleep for those in need. I remain deeply inspired by and in awe of the persons who have stepped up to the challenge of fulfilling that need. As a volunteer with NINA, I have the privilege of delivering bags and boxes of food to the Purple Cliffs camp each week. Both the Durango Food Bank and St. Columba Catholic Church generously provide this food. This morning, I delivered twenty-seven bags of food to Per- Purple Cliffs. It is a joy to behold how grateful the Purple Cliffs residents are for these donations, and it is quite impressive how industrious and creative those folks have been in constructing a complete kitchen with cooking and dishwashing facilities. Much of the food donated is turned into meals that feed twenty-plus individuals at a time. A second kitchen is under construction, and in addition, there are two large community tents available for sharing meals. What I've learned also is a large part of the Purple Cliffs is self-managed, and you heard that from uh Tim Sargent earlier. They are able to resolve most serious issues that arrive, arise, including those involving inappropriate behavior. In addition, when items such as tents and sleeping bags are donated, the recipients are expected to do cleanup chores within the camp or alongside La Posta Road. I have great respect for my unhoused neighbors and sincerely hope that those who are interested in transitioning beyond homelessness will have the opportunity to do so at Nina's Elkview Community. Thank you for your time.
Um, the next person on the list is Janet. Janet, I have allowed you to speak. Uh, please unmute yourself. Uh, introduce yourself with your name and address, and you have three minutes. Janet, you are still muted. I see that you have unmuted yourself, but we do not hear you. Still do not hear you, so you may want to try rejoining the meeting. Uh, next person on the list is Marsh. Marsh, I've allowed you to speak. Uh, please unmute yourself and then give us your name and address for the record, and you have three min- three minutes.
My name is Marsh Paul. My address is three sixty-one South Commuter, New Rio, unit two twenty-nine. First of all, I would like to thank the city council for your personal and business commitment. Being deeply involved in the homeless topic for the last fifteen months, I better understand the complexity of all the issues you have to deal with. I believe each city councillor has the welfare of Durango in the center, at the center of his or her thoughts and actions. Uh, my journey into better understanding homelessness has been very, very personal to me. Last summer, I took a three-day, ninety-mile road trip to Camp Hope in Las Cruces, New Mexico. There I met with Jen Lopez and Nicole Martinez, so I'm familiar with Camp Hope personally. Uh, I had two men with me. One rider was a homeless advocate for the city, and the other individual was from Purple Cliffs. Uh, my wife asked me the evening before the trip if I was comfortable. And my honest answer was not a hundred percent. As they say in the commercial, the price, the trip was priceless. I'm still processing the challenging conversations we had on the trip. I probably had more lightning conversations during that trip and with some of my friends later. When I tell you now that I see homeless as real people, it clearly speaks to where I started from in the beginning. To help people understand homelessness, I hosted listening sessions with Sean, meetings with service organizations, talks with strangers, and many discussions with family and friends. I wish I could say that all these discussions, people changed their mind. Sadly, that wasn't the case. People had very strong opinions, even though many beliefs are not based on facts. I estimate twenty-five percent didn't change their mind, uh twenty-five percent became supportive, but fifty percent are still neutral. Uh, I say to you now, for the homeless, uh, to the community, it is not going away. The city council, you will never get a community consensus on homelessness. You must exhibit true leadership and follow through on your plans to support Nina. Uh, Mayor Brookie, in the year two thousand twenty, you had twenty-twenty vision of this past because you were present when the city did nothing to address homelessness. In your second term as mayor, there are abundant COVID-nineteen challenges, but there's also significant camp funding available that you need to make a decision, the city and the mayor, very soon, or that funding will be lost before the end of the year. I just want to thank for everything and and the community and what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Um, the next person on the list is Kathleen. Kathleen, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Uh, give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Van Boris. I work with the Interfaith Alliance in Denver, Colorado. I hold a doctoral degree in policy focusing on housing and homeless issues across our nation. I'm currently working with six states and five counties in Colorado to set up safe outdoor spaces. These are spaces that have popped up as a best practice specifically during COVID. I cannot express to the level I need to the urgency that that every community needs to take in hand when looking at serving homeless populations during COVID. This is a public health emergency. The CDC has issued guidelines about the importance of having safe spaces for those who are unhoused during COVID, as well as the importance of providing resource-rich spaces so that we can try and ensure transition for those who are unhoused. There is a faith-based-led effort across the state of Colorado to try and provide these safe spaces. Nina is standing as that faith supporter right now in Durango. I can also tell you that there is funding for safe outdoor spaces and transitional campsites such as this. That funding is going quickly. It is very important for Durango to consider how they are going to move forward with what is going to be an increased homeless population. Durango is not unique with this. This is expected across the nation and we're already seeing it across the state of Colorado. I would like to end by saying that while Camp Hope was the best practice model and is a model that even the United Nations Human Rights Council has said is a best practice model around the world, that the Camp Hope model is something we see in San Francisco, we see it in Portland, we see it in Tacoma, and we see it in Rochester, New York. The CDC has said this is the most supportive model for trying to transition those who can be served from homelessness into housing, as well as offering them public health safety and the community public health safety during the time of COVID. I am happy for anyone to reach out to me if they'd like any of the national statistics or information. I'd always love to continue those conversations. And again, I'd like to reiterate that the Interfaith Alliance of Colorado and our over five thousand supporters back Nina in trying to house those who are currently unhoused during the time of COVID.
Thank you very much, Dr. Broke. And next speaker, please.
The next one on the list is Megan. Megan, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Megan Picard. I am the principal with the Athena Group and I live in Westminster, Colorado. Thank you so much for your thoughtful attention to this issue and for the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. It was my honor, as you well know, to work with the greater Durango community to develop the strategic plan on homelessness for Durango and La Plata County. I have written you a letter in support of Nina's request, so I don't want to take too much time here. I know many, many people want to speak. I do want to underscore the incredibly thoughtful, collaborative, responsible and responsive nature of the way Nina has worked to meet housed and other neighbors' needs as they have developed the plans for the managed community at the Elkview site. This community, this not only, of course, they're working not only to meet their neighbors' needs, but also working to provide a service to Durango that is a serious gap in the community and that can help many people access housing, hopefully ultimately reducing the number of people that have to face the trauma of living in unsafe, unhoused conditions day in, day out. In my opinion, the way Nina is approaching this work is an example of the best a community can be. Because I believe so deeply in the value and the strategic work that we all did, working with so many different people and listening so intently across each other's issues to come up with something that would be a best way forward for everyone. And really, that Nina continues and even has strengthened since then. I want to also underscore my offer to make myself available to the community on a pro bono basis to help this be a success. Whether you choose to look into a trial period, maybe some of that becomes part of your lease. But I would really love to support them, as you've heard so many others, putting out their efforts and taking their personal time as well, from Jen Lopez to Paul Roythmeyer, to many others. And I'm just going to stop with that now and thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration.
I do not see anybody else that has raised their hand in the attendee list. We do have a couple people on telephones. So if you called in to the meeting and would like to speak to this public hearing, you can press star nine. And if anybody else in the attendee list using the Zoom app would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. I do have another one here. I have allowed Otto to speak. Otto, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi there, my name is Elliot Krichman. I live in the Crestview neighborhood up on Highland Avenue. My backyard backs up to the mountain park. I've lived here for over twenty years. And I realize that the homeless population definitely needs addressing and there's some serious needs. I question, number one, I guess, this project going forward, but more than that, I question, and I think the main concern is this just a link to building a whole bigger homeless campus in the neighborhood. At one point, where Manas is, was on the outskirts of town and it no longer is the outskirts of town. This project is going to help twenty-five or thirty people. But there's a lot of other people in the neighborhoods, the Thompson neighborhood, Crestview neighborhood, up Twenty-Fifth Street, who all use this as access to get into town, to come through down Forest Avenue and down past Escape Park, Schneider Park. I'm concerned that the chief of police has concerns. I'm concerned that the county commissioner is, it sounds like maybe Purple Cliffs might not continue. So I'm not so much concerned about this specific project. I'm concerned about the bigger picture and how this is a link in the bigger picture. If we're trying to build a whole homeless campus in this neighborhood, then let's call it that. And, you know, maybe there's support to proceed that way. But if that's not what we're doing, we need to look at that because that's a very real implication of what's likely to happen. I've cleaned up tons of homeless camps' remains in the mountain park. I use trails on a daily basis. I go into town on a daily basis through Schneider Park. And it's not pleasant. And I don't want to continue those experiences and make them worse. So while I really support helping those in need and would love to see a whole campus being built that provides all the services for these people, I really am not in favor of doing that in, in the neighborhood here. And I think maybe moving Manas Soup Kitchen and coming up with a proper location. I've heard people say this isn't the best location, but it's the best that we've come up with. That's not good enough for me. This is my home. This is where I'm raising my kids. These are streets that I use every day. So that's just my, my input from listening tonight. Thank you.
The next person on the list I see is Seth. Seth, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Seth Fertney and I live in the Mollus Drive up in the Sky Ridge neighborhood. And I come to this issue from the perspective of a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, not with a strong background, at least historically, in the homelessness issue and how it affects the community, but by virtue of an interest in how the community invests in the quality of life for its citizens overall. And had several circumstances where my wife was uncomfortable downtown with people sleeping on benches or going through Schneider Park and encountering homelessness people and basically nearing me, you know, out of a sense of kind of proximity comfort. And I thought, okay, right now, we are a community with a choice. And the choice is, do we like what we're doing right now? Basically, let's do nothing. We're comfortable with what is happening now, which is mostly unmanaged homelessness. And fundamentally, I would argue that the circumstances are not that attractive and that there's some negative repercussions that we're all experiencing. And we either agree that that's the choice we want to make, that smelling urine in Schneider Park and accepting the fire risk of people camping in an unmanaged situation is the choice we favor, or we choose something other than that. And that, right now, is the Elkview property. In my humble opinion, an organized camp improves the circumstances we're facing markedly over doing nothing. And I therefore, after having done some research, think that it's actually the choice that I would favor, my wife would favor, because I think it improves upon the situation we are facing right now and not a choice of, it's not do nothing and it gets better. It's, if you do nothing, the situation we have probably continues to worsen. So I think the commitment to management of a park and the commitment to enforcement of any outcomes from that, whatever those may be, is something we, we agreed to do as a community and I think we've got a better chance of coming out of this positively than doing nothing excepting the circumstances we, we currently favor or that we've currently endure. Thanks very much.
The next person on the list is John. John, I have allowed you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is John Gamble. I live at thirty-one oh six East Fourth Avenue. And I see so many friends faces on the screen. I think first and foremost, I just want the public to know how these many people so well serve our community generously and with little pay for their time and their effort. And I personally, I thank you a lot. I also want to say to you, Mitchell, I would rather invite people to speak than allow them to speak. It's a minor word, but maybe a little better. I think that opportunity occasionally arises. Right now, the council's facing an opportunity at the trail crossing at Thirty-Second Street. That's a possible good opportunity. I think tonight, we're talking about an opportunity with a group of volunteers who have stepped forward, spent enormous time and effort, have garnered resources and could further address the homeless problem facing our community. I think this is an opportunity that will go away unless we act. And so I urge you, my friends, and I urge this whole community, let's move forward in a positive way. Let's find a way to make this happen. We're not going to solve all the problems. We're not going to ever entirely make the community safe. But let's take it a step at a time and do what we can to address our issues. I thank you for your service. Good evening.
Mayor, you are muted.
I want to thank John and, and yeah, we can re-script our invitation as opposed to allowing members to participate. That is certainly our intent. So semantics aside, are there any more comments?
Yes, Mayor, I do see someone else and I would second that. Thank you, Mr. Gamble, for that feedback. I have a phone number here ending in one-five-nine-five. I have invited you to speak. I believe on the telephone, you have to press star six to unmute yourself. I see you have unmuted. Please give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Janet Monell and I live at one zero zero four Oak Drive in Durango. I would like to speak specifically tonight to the site choice. I am just going on general information that I have received from others and it all made sense to me. First, I believe that the Elkview site is not the best choice. As others have said, a homeless housing complex is incompatible with the stated use of the property as a view shed. And it will cause increased trespassing, theft and intimidations in nearby neighborhoods. There will be spillover camping into and around overland mountain parks. There's also the likelihood of a catastrophic wildfire at the adjacent electrical substation. This risk will increase with the nearness of so many people. The nearness downtown will increase visible public drunkenness, panhandling, shoplifting, loitering and other crimes. And very importantly, it will deprive Green Mount Cemetery visitors of the tranquil environment they have every right to expect. I believe that the DeNier Youth Center property has not properly been vetted. This is a fifteen-thousand-square-foot, twenty-eight-bed center. It is secure. It has a commercial kitchen. It has outside grounds. It's close to the Durango Food Bank, the Colorado Addiction Treatment Services and a Durango Transit Stop. Yes, a city, excuse me, a state-to-county ownership transfer and a youth variance from Boto are necessary and can be accomplished. In fact, there was a variance necessary to establish the DeNier Youth Center in the first place. I believe that development of Elkview should be tabled until the DeNier site can be vetted properly. I am for providing for the homeless in our community, but I believe a comprehensive effort in a site that is not directly next to a sacred cemetery and residential neighborhoods is much better and needs to be really investigated. And I also am aware that the VOA Community Shelter, which is available to homeless men, women and children, is often underutilized because it does not allow drugs or alcohol. I don't believe you can have it both ways. Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much for your time and consideration of my assessment of this very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mitchell, more speakers?
We do still have quite a few attendees, but no one has raised their hand. So we are kind of winding down here. I would probably call for last call for this portion of the meeting. If you have public comments for this public hearing, please use the raise hand function.
Mitchell, this is Donna Rowe. Because I was a speaker, I can't raise my hand. It doesn't seem to offer that. Could I say a few words?
All right, I would leave that one up to the mayor.
It's for public comment. We may have, we need to have further discussion and if there was items during your speech that council would like to have further clarification from you, that would be the time for you to speak, I believe. I'll leave it open to council. Would you rather, we can close the public hearing. This was meant for public comment and, and you did speak. We will probably have questions for you, is what I can suggest.
Okay.
All righty.
I wanted to respond to your comments earlier.
Okay, I think we'll close the public hearing and we'll ask you to do that during our deliberations. Hearing no other voices from the public.
Mayor, we do have a couple others, actually.
Okay.
I believe that we have a couple other people who have called in on the phone. Please remember to use star nine to raise your hand if you called in on the phone. I see a person here, Jane. I invite you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Jane. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live in Mirador, which is just up from the cemetery. And I've only lived here for a year, but it's a beautiful community. I would just say that I am definitely in support of helping our homeless community in Durango. I understand that there are huge struggles with the homeless. And I would add that I recognize that homelessness is a symptom of many other issues in society where we are failing to properly fund mental health services, behavioral services, and, and other services for folks that are unfortunate. I would like to second the prior speaker's comments about location. I feel that the location is inappropriate considering the close proximity to residential, the cemetery and businesses in the area. I think that it puts an unfair burden on those neighborhoods and businesses. And it's probably, you know, not in the best interest of Durango as a, you know, a beacon to tourism, which has been previously mentioned. And I would also second that there are other locations that have probably not been vetted properly, including the De Nier Center, as well as other places. And I'm no expert in this. I haven't done a lot of research on it. I don't want to come across as, as having a lot of knowledge about it. But I just feel that the location that's been selected has very many reasons to not be the appropriate place for this, this shelter, this sheltering opportunity for homelessness. So that's all I have to say. And I do want to thank everyone for, for the time and effort that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, and Mitchell.
We do have one more. Phone number ending in two seven five two. I have allowed you to speak. Please press star six to unmute yourself and then give us your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes. On, on the telephone, use the, the number pad to press star six to unmute yourself if you're having difficulties. Unfortunately, it looks like this member of the community is not able to unmute themselves. So I think, Mayor, that's the last person in the list.
Great, great. Thanks. We always have these awkward times when people are trying to understand the technology, and it's the equivalent of walking from your chair up to the podium in city council chambers. So it's, it's the virtual similarity in, in this awkward format. And I apologize for any, any awkwardnesses or that the technology presents us with. But we're doing our best in the time of COVID. So with that, I'll, I'll close the public hearing and move back into discussion amongst councilors. And I, just for, to bracket this a little bit, I'd like to reread the, the purpose of this hearing, which is a public hearing to receive public testimony and consider a conditional property lease to St. Mark's Church through its Neighbors in Need Alliance for the establishment of a homeless sheltering area on city-owned property adjacent to the cemetery. So really, that's, we're not here to this, this evening to decide the fate of this project or go, no-go, but tacitly approval to consider a conditional property lease, which in my mind is the first step. But as has been said here tonight, the expectation is that this would be ultimately tacit approval of this project, I believe is what the expectation is. But simply, that's not what the agendized decision before us is. So with that, I just want to, if council wants to take any other things into consideration, that's, but I'd like city attorney perhaps to weigh in on the conditional property lease. And certainly, that's part of our discussion, to attach conditions to this lease, if any. And one of the things I've heard tonight that I'd like clarity on in discussion amongst councilors is that this was described again as a temporary facility. And in my mind, I was looking towards a more permanent solution as one member of council. But it's been described as a temporary facility. So we have a couple methods of moving forward with ultimately approval. And that is to go through the normal public process, as was described earlier, the limited use permit application. Or we can decide this is an emergency and create, instruct our city manager to create some emergency action around establishment of this camp. An emergency action of that nature, in my understanding, is, has to have some timeframe associated with it, whether that's thirty days, similar to our face mask ordinance, or whether that's a reasonable amount of time, as was established previously for an emergency homeless camp resulting from the four sixteen fire event. And so I think as we move forward, we need to understand what this lease really represents. And if it's temporary, if so, what duration that might involve? And if it's permanent, what the, what if emergency action, it would be appropriate mechanism to accomplish that? So I'll quit talking. And perhaps the city attorney, you have any thoughts on that at this point? Or you want to weigh in later? Your choice.
I can give some general comments. Again, the process on lease is required by the charter is that we have the hearing. If the, my understanding of the direction tonight would be, choice A would be to authorize the preparation of a lease. You're not approving the lease tonight. You would then come back and review that lease along with an ordinance at your next meeting. So again, preparing the lease would not obligate you to approve it. I did put together a, a list of the, sort of the things that came to mind in terms of what should be included in a lease. And those were included as bullet points in the agenda doc that you have in your packet. So certainly, you know, if council wants to give direction or prepare a lease, any items, concerns, you know, details that you would want to include in a lease, I'd be interested in hearing those. An emergency ordinance is valid for sixty days. If that's what you're considering doing, you know, in terms of, but the emergency ordinance, it seems to me, would be more directed toward land use than it would be toward the lease issue. I'll let Kevin chime in on that, though.
Thank you, Derek. Kevin?
May I just make one comment?
Sure, Kim, absolutely, yeah.
I wasn't certain when you mentioned that this temporary situation. I think the intention is for it to be transitional housing, but be a camp there for at least eighteen months. I just wanted to confirm that.
Thank you. And that was a point of confusion. The temporary came up a number of times. And it is temporary in the sense that an occupant, what you're suggesting was the interpretation would be temporary in the sense that it would be temporary for the individual who was camping there to evaluate other options and perhaps move into the shelter that is being built soon. Great, great, thanks. I don't know if anybody else had that confusion or not, but I think we deserve to let the public know that this is a permanent decision. That's what Nina is requesting of us, is a permanent decision. That was ready.
I, I believe actually it was an eighteen-month lease, conditional lease for eighteen months. And the, the term was pilot. So I, I think I'd like to clarify that from the Nina group, but those were in my notes.
Good, good. Kevin, did you have any thoughts to add on to the city attorney's thoughts?
Sure. And forgive me if maybe I didn't interpret, Mayor, what you're indicating. But it seems to me that this has been a long road on this issue. And now the facts are before you relative to locating on this parcel or not doing so. I think you understand the general impacts, the general concept of the proposal. My sense is that leaving here tonight, we would probably want a pretty clear sense of direction, whether you support the concept or you don't. And if you don't, we don't move forward. And if you do, we move forward with all the minutia and all the nitty-gritty that, quite honestly, probably you don't need to be burdened with. In fact, the, the limited use permit is administrative function that, you know, if it needs variances, it has to go to planning commission. But essentially, I think what we would be hearing is yes, let's move forward, or no, this isn't the right spot to do this. And then we go back to not, maybe not square one, but start working on alternatives. I would not want to leave here tonight with uncertainty as to where this might be headed. Because quite frankly, if there's going to be a commitment of resources by, whether it's staff resources or financial resources, I think you, we want to have a sense of whether council wants to go there or not. And then all that nitty-gritty, all the details, certainly you will see the lease in, in its total as a proposal. But I, I would hope that it wouldn't be, well, we'll look at the lease and then we'll think about whether we want to do this or not. I think it's more about, we're, we're comfortable moving forward if the lease reads the way it needs to and if the project can be accomplished. My, my sense is that, and you've read the staff report. I think you understand some of the staff concerns. You've heard some of those as well tonight. But if we move forward, then we put some processes in play, including the work of the city attorney and the community development staff to work through all of the minutia in a fairly short order. I think if there's going to be, going to be a lease, we want to move forward with the expectation that that's where it's headed, and we'll figure out the details. If there's not going to be, then let's, you know, move on to the next issue. And, and forgive me if that sounds terse or not very compassionate. But I guess we need to come to a decision point, and then we can work through the details. We can bring back any of those details you want. As I spoke early on, my sense would be, obviously, if you look at what's at the bottom of the staff report, you had three actions. And one is no action. One is no action, but ask for more information. And the third one is direct the city attorney and staff to move forward on this with the details. And we can take any one of those and, and come to conclusion and move forward. But I, and I can come back in two weeks if you direct the city attorney to start preparing a lease. We can come back in two weeks and share everything we've learned in terms of the review and potential variances and the hurdles that come from it. You know, there's still some things that aren't in that staff report that I'm, we would need to understand better, which is if this is a temporary eighteen-month pilot, I can't imagine you'd want to invest a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in improvements, including sewer lines and water lines and fixed buildings, if in fact, it's a temporary condition. I think it's either probably going to be a slow start with a phase one that doesn't have a lot of those improvements with the hope that after eighteen months, you can go into those things. But again, because we haven't had that staff review and dialogue with the applicant, it's really hard to know specifically where they want to head with this. But my sense is you're not going to get a whole lot on the ground in the next two months. Certainly not going, you're not going to get bathrooms plumbed in the next two months, particularly if you're relying on the Aspero project, which still has a number of hurdles to overcome in terms of answering questions. And they're not even, they don't even have a shovel in the ground yet. So we shouldn't expect, you know, sewer and water to be extended to their property line and then beyond in the next, you know, six to eight weeks. So there is a lot of questions here. But I think it comes, boils down to, does the council support the concept? And if they do, we work through the details, and we report back to you on those as we need to, particularly with the terms of the lease.
Thank, thank you for that. I think the salient point there is what you're suggesting is, you know, that you'll take care, staff will take it from here. And if, if you hear a thumbs up from council tonight with no further public comment, and that's concerning, I think in terms of what the public might expect to understand the full financial obligation as well as the, the specifics of the site plan related to, and, and the term duration, i.e., pilot versus long-term versus, and so those are a couple of concerns I have. Having not gone through the entire process, we've had LPEA express concerns, business owners express concerns, Housing Solutions express concerns, our own Parks and Recs express concerns. We've got full support from Nina, thankfully, and Access Health, which will be part of the critical participants. But I think there's many, many questions in my mind still. It's a bit of a moving target. And I think council is always, I, I feel that I have always supported this concept. But every time we see this, there's another new, new issue to resolve. Primarily, my concern is the fate of Purple Cliffs at this point. Not only the fate of Purple Cliffs, but the long-term financial obligation of the joint and city-county that have committed funds and supported this effort entirely to date. And, and, and what therefore is our long-term mutual support of, of the big picture has been suggested before. So a couple of my, my questions. And we can direct those towards both Jim and Paul and Donna and Carolyn within our, as the applicants, if anybody else is concerned with those issues. So I'll quit talking and invite, perhaps we just go around. Mayor Protem Baxter, do you have any questions or concerns at this point?
I don't really have any questions. I, I'm not certain that this obligates the city to future payment, support payments. So that would be something I would want to know more about. I, I do believe that if this is something that council chooses to do, no matter where it is, we need to know currently what the situation is on the ground with crimes, with camping in overland park, and so that we can measure whether or not the camp itself has an impact on any of those. So Schneider Park used by people sleeping or doing whatever that seems to be unacceptable. So that's something I would definitely think we would have to be, have in place if we were going to do something like this. And as I said, no matter where it would be. Dean, you're absolutely right. This is a really challenging situation. Previous councils have asked the community to step forward. That it was a community need, a community effort needed to be led. The city was not going to provide all the management and all the space and do everything themselves. This was something community had to come together to do. And I, I think that we've seen that happen. In all good faith, Nina has done an amazing job getting the concept together and vetting a location. I don't think there's a perfect location by any means. It, it would have been ideal if thirty years ago or twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, when Manah was created, as well as all the other housing there, if it had been done somewhere else, where it was maybe located a little bit more, had, was still a convenient location, but wasn't so impactful on neighborhoods. I'm, I'm still struggling in some ways with this concept because I feel that there is an unmet need, and this, this would fill, fill one of those gaps. And I, I'm, had no idea we had seventy people at Purple Cliffs. That's a huge change. And obviously, if this camp can only hold thirty people, there's still going to be people needing a place to camp. So I, I'm not voicing a decision at this point in time. I'm just raising some concerns and some thoughts. And I'd like to hear from rest of council.
Thank you, Kim. Does anybody else want to go next? Council thoughts or questions of our applicant? All righty. Melissa and Chris, yeah, and Barbara, I'll. Thank you. And who wants to go first? Chris, Chris, there we go. A break's over.
I default.
You know, I have some of the same comments, actually, that Counselor Baxter just enumerated. Perhaps there, there are questions that could be answered by the applicant as they respond. I think, you know, the, the issues, as I see them, that are, are not fully understood yet, are the impacts on the Aspero community, as I mentioned earlier. Before, I was able to support this location or any location, frankly. If there's an impact on another community that was. uh this location or any location, frankly, if there's an impact on another community that was adversarial to their ability to do that very good work that we really need, uh that would be challenging for me to move forward with the lease candidly. So that piece, I feel like despite Kevin wanting a yes or no binary here, Kevin, I honestly, without that answer, it'd be very difficult for me to to do that. I think, you know, her hearing from the chief certainly about the fact that if you have a split site, he uh may have some difficulties responding to the issues that seem relevant to these sites, uh regardless of of management, not management. I think that's a very real thing. We've certainly had and experienced those impacts over the many years that we've been contending with this, and I want to be respectful of uh the staffing of the police department and the issues that are created in those neighborhoods. And we heard tonight from the county that they want to close the one camp and the proposal is to keep both camps open. So that's unresolved for me. That's another key issue that I don't think I can uh make a decision on this without understanding precisely whether that stays open or closed. And uh, you know, if if both camps are able to stay open, I don't see the financial picture there as clearly as I would like uh in terms of supporting two separate camps. I don't think council nor uh the county were prepared for that idea um in terms of the financial aspect of it. And uh, but I I do want to say and reiterate too, you know, I know uh because we've been contending with this for three and a half of the years that I've been on council, it's been the the number one thing that we've dealt with. I, you know, I was talking about how many hours we've actually contended with this, and I'll bet it's in the hundreds at this point. So I I want to uh pay respect to Nina for the efforts that they've made and just say that I am highly supportive of the concept. Uh, and and, you know, am supportive of what they've achieved to date in terms of crystallizing the ideas behind what needs to take place, what the facility needs to look like, what the management is and all the details therein. I I just don't know if we have enough information at this particular juncture to say, yep, that's the site. One other question I would throw out at him is I heard the, you know, six foot fence on the on the um the side of you know, the on the road, and I just don't think that's nearly high enough. I agree with one of the folks that commented that it would be, you know, at that elevation where the cemetery is, you'd be able to look right down in there. And then that impact is real and it's uh of high concern to many people in the community uh that we've heard from. So um, I think that that probably is something to look at. And I do understand this is extremely challenging uh because we've been challenged by it all along. And I do I do understand that they, you know, feel like they found the best of the most difficult options. I I get it. But I don't think we've resolved all the issues relevant to be able to pick this and say staff go forward without having another chance to uh vet it as council.
Thank you, Chris. Barbara.
Thank you. Um. First of all, let me just acknowledge all of the incredible hours of work from Nina on this effort. It's been a we we asked for the faith based community to step up and you have. So thank you. And I also want to acknowledge councillor Bettine's comment that for three and a half years, this at least on his council, this has been a discussion. And um, my own view is that we will not get all our questions answered. In many ways, it's a leap of faith and you have to start on the first step. That's that's paraphrasing Martin Luther King. Faith starts with taking the first step. And so I I look at it as we have been committed to finding a location for a managed community. And we put it out to the public or to the faith base to help do this. They've done the work. Is it perfect? No. Do we have all of the answers? No, but we also made a commitment to our the county commissioners that if they stepped forward with Purple Cliffs, we would find a spot for a community. Now that we have seventy people, and I do expect a surge in homelessness due to evictions. It may be that we need to look at uh Purple Cliffs. That will be a county decision. I'll also recognize that things will change in November. So decisions that might be made now could vary. So saying we want a commitment from the county commissioners now with an election two two months away seems unrealistic as well. So my own view is that we do need to make a decision, at least with this conditional property lease. Because we we made a commitment and this is the best that's come forward, or as I often say, the least bad option. And I'll remind us all that the city staff looked at ten or eleven sites and ruled out each of them for a variety of reasons. And so we this is the option we have, and I will come back with, I think that I have faith that we can work through the issues, but we have to take this first step.
Thank you, Barbara. Melissa, I see you up.
So I think I want to thank everyone for their for their words tonight and for speaking to council. I appreciate it very much. This is an extremely difficult um decision because it has ramifications for really truly, you know, many organizations, businesses, residents, housed and unhoused. And I am very, very appreciative of the need to 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 take some type of action to try to help a vulnerable population that that does need help and that does need support in some way. I am concerned though with primarily with the site. That's my I I'm concerned with the location. I I feel like if we were to move forward, I would I would want more public processes around it. I still think that we need to hear you know, I'd want to I'd want to I want to very carefully think about that. I recognize that Nina has come forward with this site as the as their preferred solution. We did have other sites that were that we were looking at and um this entire concept, um which I do support, um and it was part of the Athena Plan, which this council all supported. And we designated money for that plan. You know, this this camp was is part of that transitional housing is part of that plan. So I see the need for it. But I have concerns about the location and 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 impacts to the community around it. Primarily because of the issues that we dealt with before the four sixteen fire, the need to move it, the impacts to the residents there. And so I I just I there's a part of me that wants to push back a little bit on staff and say, staff, you know, you know, I want to hear from staff if there's any other alternative that this proposal, this idea could be considered besides the cemetery lot. I guess that's kind of where I'm landing.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there any, I might ask council if there's any questions that can be directed to the applicant, whether that be uh Donna had requested additional speaking time. Uh, Carolyn, Jim, Paul, or Carolyn Hunter, um specific to sites or I think their expectation is that this is not just a an agreement to create an agreement, a lease, but to approve their approve the overall project. And it's it's been made clear that that's the interpretation to me. And you know, I I quite honestly expected more public participation around this, uh like would be a conventional planning project for any other land use that has been considered uh from our sewer treatment plant to our uh any housing projects, uh including Aspero that took a number of years continued with continued city support to overcome the obstacles to make that a reality. And so I I guess I'm I am appreciative of everything that Nina's done. It's an incredible process. Uh, I was following it up until the point where they brought us this particular site, which council was not part of that decision. That was an independent uh arrival at that decision by Nina with good information. But I I do recall being part of a failed test project on that very same exact piece of property without the structure that Nina is proposing as Camp Hope. But some of the basic tenants that were uh were discovered during that temporary camp that we established there during the forest fires was the access to the cemetery. The the uh the migration of the population to areas outside the camp can't, you know, how can we control that? How can we assure the public that the their loved ones, generations of of people in that cemetery and generations that'll visit them in the future will not have an adverse experience. I'm not overly religious, but I, you know, I I I I respect that sacred space of of Greenmont Cemetery for generations. I always my decisions are always on the side of empathy, I hope. When I'm confused and have a hard time making a decision, I always say, I I want to take make the most empathetic choice. This is a there's there's no empathetic choice here. It's a it it will be a we we need empathy on all fronts. And so it's it's I can't apply my normal decision making practices to this decision. Kim. And then Barbara.
Thank you, Dean. Um, I think that what you just mentioned about um the cemetery made me realize that in a lot of areas, cemeteries are secured so that there can be no trespassing on the cemetery. And that's something we haven't talked about. Whether or not that's a viable option for us or not, or whether it's something we've considered. So I that it just dawned on me right now that we haven't discussed that. And that might alleviate some of those concerns for some of the residents if that's I mean, that might be something we want to consider doing anyway, whether there's a camp there or not, given the challenges that we have. So I have other things to say, but right now I but what Barbara chat?
Yeah, Barbara, thank.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of items, you know, um in February of twenty nineteen, when the city was dealing with its issues with the ACLU and and camping overnight camping was illegal, but um devised the plan that you could shelter from one hour before sunset to one hour after sunrise in open spaces. Well, back in February, when that law was passed, council actually talked about having a camp spot identified by May of twenty nineteen. And I recognize how hard it is. Um, and it's uh not an easy decision, but now we're a year and a half later and I just believe that there are, I I've asked staff on in in public forums, please give us the the best bad site, if you will. And there's no, there's no saying, well, we could make this work. It's always what won't work. And I've asked, is there no backup plan for this? If this doesn't go through without view, what is the backup plan? And right now, the backup plan is to rely on seventy people being camped on a hillside on uh county property that the county commissioners have made very clear was to be a temporary arrangement. And so I recognize that, you know, the desire to consider another space, but I want to hold the staff then accountable to come up with something because eleven sites have been looked at. And so um, I come back with uh, this is a conditional property lease. Uh, I have not taken it to your your interpretation, Mayor, that this is an approval of a whole project. I believe it gives the Nina group the opportunity to go forward, to have the discussions, to have the uh interaction with staff in a significant way. It will still be coming before the public. This is not the final decision. This is a a light, if you will, to start interacting in a more meaningful way with staff to hopefully identify issues and ways to overcome them.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. And yeah, that's the that's as I saw it. I mean, I thought when we got agendized for a lease, it was exactly that. Barbara and uh, but clearly, I think expectations are well beyond that. Uh, I think just as you stated, uh, and I've suggested to uh members of Nina in terms of process, you got to show demonstration of ownership or control of the site. That's a checklist item number one on a land use application. And this is that. This is a a draft agreement that says the city would allow you under, you know, to proceed through the land use process like any other developer that wants to buy a piece of property. Uh, they wouldn't actually have purchased the property or have made that entire transaction. Their their deal would be conditional upon making it through the land use process and therefore public comment and full vetting of the project. That's what I had hoped back months ago would have happened with this, that we would have prepared a lease, authorized them to move forward in this process, which has uh now become fixated on the lease. So that's my, I appreciate your comments because that's a, if I move forward at the decision tonight, it would be exactly that. This allows them to begin that process and we would still expect that the public would be able to uh allow us as a community to vet the project in its entirety. I think I'm I'm totally supportive of the Camp Hope model. That's been clear. There's no question about that. The efforts of Nina have been heroic and legendary. And uh, you know, I'm just a little I I still question the appropriateness of this particular site. If that's all we got, then let's do it and and move forward. Uh, I think the public deserves another view at this uh in its completion. So Kim, you're back.
I would agree with you, Dean. I think this is about giving a lease so that the process can move forward and so I'm sorry, Kevin, but your comment a little bit earlier kind of confused me a little bit because I did. I didn't think that what we had discussed previously was the lease agreement and so that this could move through the process, which then means being vetted. It means more public comment. Um, I also know that there's a request to try to expedite it so that it can be available for November. And I know there's a that's a that's a huge challenge to make that happen. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. I don't have an answer for where else it could be. You know, we've looked at at all those pieces of property. County commissioners have made suggestions. There is, as you said, and as as everyone else has said, there is no good place to do this currently in our community. And I I actually think it might reduce the incidence of homeless people just hanging in town because they actually have a place to go. I don't know that for a fact. That's why we need some data about what happens before and what happens after and during. Boy, this is a challenge.
Uh, Chris.
Yeah, I I think I just want to reassert what I was trying to say. Kind of respond to some of Barbara's comments to it. I think you know, for me, it's not a right now is not a choice that I can make on this site. I cannot make that choice, but it's not for me, I'm not eliminating the site either. I I think um I would like those questions to be answered. I I think uh, I don't feel the pressure to act tonight. Uh, I'm sure everyone would like to have something in place by November. And certainly, this is taking longer than anyone would have ever imagined it taking. But um but those questions that that I asked relevant to the other supportive housing issue, I think are critical answers that we need to have before I can support this project and uh credit issues about where are those seventy people going to go to to Kim's point. Um, you've got a huge differential there already existing between these numbers. And if we don't have the two camps existing, this camp, uh, I think we probably know where those other thirty five people go immediately when that camp gets closed down, if that's what's going to happen. So I want to hear definitive answers about what's That camp gets closed down, if that's what's going to happen. So I want to hear definitive answers about what's taking place with that camp. And what's going to go on with those people because. Either going to go dispersed camping, there's not room for them. Or, you know, create issues around these neighborhoods that we have battled with for a long time. And so. I would like to have those answers. I don't feel a compelled to make a decision tonight about this site until I have them.
Chris, since you mentioned, I I think there there was a little bit of confusion about what I said about the seventy people. I I think that what I'm saying is that. We need more than one camp because we have so many people and we have different needs by different people. And this one camp would fill a gap that Purple Cliffs doesn't fill very well. And then Purple Cliffs could possibly fill another gap. Now, I realize that we're speaking of of county land and the county commissioners get to make their own choice about whether or not that stays and the impact that it has. On the community, but I do think that. This is not a decision on that location. This is a decision on granting a draft lease so that there can be further discussion and so that your questions could get answered. I think this actually provides a great forum for answering those questions, whether the answers be the ones we want to hear or don't want to hear. So.
I don't I don't think approving a draft lease necessitates. Those questions being answered by any stretch. And I think not knowing the answer about what happens to that other camp. You know, for those folks that are up there, we already know there's seventy people there. What are they going to do? And where are they going to go? Those are those are big questions. And so. To just take a flyer on this and 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 not answer them is not something I'm personally prepared to do tonight. I would love to hear the answers to those questions in a more thoroughly detailed format and then perhaps. I would be ready to go forward with the lease.
Possibly. That's a condition of the lease.
Right, right.
I have a quite, I would like to ask a question if I'm. So first of all, when we met with the county commissioners back in July, I think it was on the ninth. We actually had consensus with caveats of wanting to hear public view, but we had consensus about proceeding with a conditional lease. If we can go back to that. But my question of staff then is, this has been discussed for over three and a half years. When can you come to council with an alternative to this site that you think can make work? Because. We keep kicking this discussion down the road. So. Staff have looked at ten or eleven sites. Counselor Yusef has said she, you know, wanted to see if there were anything else. When would you be able to come back to us and say? Here's another site that might that we think could work. Because we've been asking for it and I appreciate the hard work and the difficulty. I'm just looking at how long this is going to be dragged out.
Well, I might, being part of the previous councils too, the challenge to staff. For that very identical task, we. One looked at eighteen different sites, came back, this was one of them and was one of the most. You know, the criteria was not, it didn't fulfill any of the criteria, beginning with the reason the city purchased the property in the beginning, which was to protect the view shed. That's why we spent the taxpayer dollars to buy this particular piece of property. And and so that was number one on the staff's list of why this was not an appropriate location. That maybe didn't get conveyed to the Nina group when they were doing their own independent, or maybe it just got. Other items rose to more importance than the original purpose that the taxpayers bought that property for. But. It, you know, we didn't have that discussion with Nina. They just brought this to us and it was a great, it was great evaluation and I applaud their. They're jumping in to do the same. Difficulty and task that the staff did for us earlier. You know, I think the only other options on the table now are things that are in flux, like the Deneer Center it was talked about. That's what we've been waiting for that. That's my own personal hope that this would, we'd have a much better alternative than an outside camp. But in if that's not in the horizon, then we need to move on and like you say, make a make a decision, Kevin.
Okay, so the staff report had three alternatives for you and one of them was to really come back with more information. You know, I was hoping that the dialogue and the information presented tonight would be adequate for you to decide whether. The impacts on the community by locating here. Were either not so great that you could support the site or they're too great and you can't support the site. And then if you, the impacts are so not so great that you can support the site. Between the planning process and the variance process or an emergency ordinance process, you could make it happen. And the the fact that a fence is six feet this way or that way, or six feet tall or five feet tall is somewhat irrelevant. It's more about the the project. Generalities that you're supporting and willing to accept. Impacts or not. And so what I'm hearing, at least from maybe a couple of counselors is. You probably don't have enough information to be comfortable moving forward with a lease. The lease is very much just a mechanism for solidifying the deal. It's really the nuances of what's in the lease, the just the details in the lease can be hammered out. To, I mean, we've done this so many times with other organizations where the lease comes after you. You agree with what we're going to do and we just figure it out and we make sure all the legalities of it are resolved. But in this case, I think what I'm hearing is there's a lot of uncertainties associated with the project that doesn't make you comfortable saying. You know, we can live with the impacts on this site, but just go figure it out and come back and we'll do we'll do the lease. So what I didn't want to do though is invest all the agencies who do a review on a project. Have Nina start paying for engineering services, quite frankly, on a site that then they come back and we find out. You know what? Maybe the impacts on the neighborhood are too great. We don't want you to move on on this proposal. So what I was hoping we could work towards is a recognition of this site or or a different site. And if it was this site, we can work through it. But there's some certainty for Nina, even if they don't have the the lease signed on the dotted line, the council's blessed it. But I guess what I'm hearing is there's still a lot of lack of clarity on a number of things, whether it's Purple Cliffs or Sparrow. Or some of the impacts in the neighborhood that are concerning enough that you're not certain on that. You know, and as for alternative sites, I'm hesitant to go there only because then we're going back, we're taking six steps back again. And I'm not suggesting forge ahead on the lease for this site, but you know, when you ask about alternative sites, one thing we've never done is saying. Are we really, is the community, whether it's the city and or the county and the the. The partners, are they willing to put money on the table to buy a property that makes sense for something like this? We've, you know, when we did that windshield survey, I was, what city property or county properties out there that we we can put something on that doesn't cost any money? I think we've evolved past this. I mean, Nina's willing to commit three hundred thousand dollars into something here. So and and I'm. I'm hesitant to suggest we would go back to the drawing board. However, that is always an option. But maybe the first step is you don't do a lease. It's option number two, you take no action, but you ask for more information. And I guess that's one of the things I'm hearing from at least one counselor.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare a draft lease and ordinance for consideration and first reading at the September fifteenth city council meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second and discussion. If we could clarify, Barbara, your motion would be for specific to this piece of property or to.
Yes, it's specific to the Nina's request as.
And with. With the understanding that you previously stated. That it doesn't, in your mind, constitute land use approval for this project, that there would still be public input.
Request was for, the request was for a conditional property lease. I've made no. Assumptions beyond that. I'm trying to give the direction to go forward and proceed to start addressing our questions. So it's a, it's a motion for a conditional property lease for the property requested by Nina.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, that so that begs the question then, the discussion, it does, it does. What you just asked, Dean, about what is, what is that? What does the lease entail, right? What does that mean? And for me, it means that we get questions answered. And it and it, you know, it could even be that we continue looking at other properties during this time while we're making, while we're getting our questions answered and something pops up. I think we did ask staff a while back, are there private parcels that might work for this, you know, that would be. Reasonably located and is that something we might want to look into? And I don't know that we got a response back on that, but. That is another option, obviously. But I I we either have to say, yeah, I I just feel like we either have to say yes or no. One way or the other. So.
And that that's why I asked, like, council knows where they about the specificity of the site, specific to this lease, and that was clear that she. Want to make this motion with regard to this particular site.
And then just to clarify process, if we if we were to go forward with this lease tonight. Kevin, can you clarify again the process of exactly the next steps that would take place?
Well, so I would work with Dirk on a draft lease agreement. He would work on an ordinance that then would come back on the fifteenth. I my sense is because of the direction being given, we would. Have Nina as quickly as possible sit down with the staff. The planning staff, the engineering staff, Durango Fire Protection. LPA would be in on the conversation. Atmos Gas would be in on the conversation. Probably the neighbors would be in on the conversation in terms of impacts as well as requirements. And those would all be have to be synthesized. It's unlikely we would have the review done in two weeks. Particularly in advance of a staff report being prepared, but we could come back with a preliminary update of some of the things that. Stood out as probable probable need for variance. And as I indicated earlier, the variance either goes to the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Commission, the staff. Think tank on that was it probably makes more sense going to the Planning Commission because it's more of an accessible board that has public participation typically that's more robust. That would be at the end of the month. So, you know, and if you're convinced by the fifteenth, you want to move forward with. A lease, then Dirk would be preparing that ordinance for the first reading, potentially as soon as the fifteenth. If it's after that, keep in mind, we have two readings and a publication period that takes you out a number of weeks. So, you know, we're, you know, under best case scenario, if you approved the lease in the first reading on the fifteenth. You still have a second reading, the next, the first meeting in October. And then another ten day publication period. So that's middle of October on a lease. It's unlikely that the limited use permit process will have fully vetted itself by then. If it goes to Planning Commission for variances in September, that would require a lot of work on Nina's part. There there will be engineering requirements associated with this. It's not as if the limited use permit allows you to just throw down gravel. And let the water run down the hillside. I mean. All the things that are typical of a development, now there's ability to put variances on a variety of things. But those will all have to be quantified and put forth for conversation and public hearing as part of a variance process with Planning Commission. And and so if we can get them in front of staff later this week, I don't know if that's possible. If not, it's early next week. And then we start peeling back. And what I think you're going to find is the concept plan doesn't have a lot of detail in it. You know, this issue of when the sewer pipe goes in or a water pipe goes in. Or do they just want to do tents and porta johns for the first eighteen months? Those are things we'll have to work through. And if it is this second scenario where it's all very temporary. Activities, then the process changes again likely in that it's more likely to be in the this. Emergency ordinance mode rather than a limited use permit because I, you know, the land use process is not set up for. Temporary camp that has no permanency to it. The the permit process is set up for permanent development in the community. And I think Nina wants to do that in the long run. But I they're not going to do it before the snow starts flying this winter. So there's a lot to be. Vetted through here in the next handful of days. And that's why I've always been a little concerned about forging ahead without certainty on a location. And investing a lot of, quite frankly, your resources into something that. Maybe because of the impacts in the neighborhood, you're not interested in doing that.
Kevin, I want to say thank you to the planning department and to you because. I'm listening to this, having been on the planning commission for a year and or more in listening to this and realizing that this is what every project essentially goes through for you and your staff is. Is that as. When people make a decision that they want to try to build something in some location. They have to make a financial commitment to the things that are required by our process to make that happen. And that can change throughout the process because of what they learn and and the costs. And so you're constantly dealing with a moving target and I just want to say I appreciate that. Sorry, I have a busy, a noisy car going. But the other thing I want to say is that one of the reasons why we have the systems in place that we do is to have. All different types of development. And this may be our first type like this where it's not. A building, a permanent building in that sense, but we did that with the tiny homes too. And. One of the reasons why we have a planning commission is because they ask a lot of hard questions and they vet things through the process. And they raise significant issues. They listen to the public. They weigh the things that we're actually trying to weigh tonight, but they they do it in in great detail and very thoughtfully and. In some ways, I think that it would be best to allow us to go through that process so that the community. Gets their full opportunity to speak like they would at any other development, like they did for the hotel across the street from City Market. So that it, our process does do what we designed it to do. And then we get the advice from the planning commission. I think that would be incredibly helpful. Counselor Bettine's questions could get answered. Some of my unease or or whatever it might be can be answered. That's just kind of my feeling about it. So if Nina is willing to step up and make those investments in. Infrastructure or in in engineering that they need to make in order to get this through the process, knowing that it may very well not pass the test. That's their choice because that's what every other developer has the choice of doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. And I might just echo that exact statement that that, you know, from Kevin, I appreciate your. Concern about expenditure resources, but just as Kim mentioned, every we do, that's the city's obligation. That's as government to take on anybody on any site that for. Whether it's a housing project, a car wash, whatever that might be, that is our process in the in the community. And it's especially important in my mind when there's expenditure of city dollars involved in that very project. That we take it through our own process and and the circumvention of that process would only. Bring more grief and more. Less successful, the ultimate outcome of that project. And so I think if without that, we really can't tell all of our. Community that the council's made the right decision or that we didn't give them some. Favoritism relative to this particular land use. So I, you know, I think. And and if the if the if the drafting of a lease such that they can check that box off and say that the owner of the land, being the city of Durango. Authorizes them to proceed with that process, that's what I'm very comfortable in doing. And I, that's what I stated back in July in the. Joint Board of County Commissioner City Council Meeting, that we should absolutely do this. We could do that tomorrow. And I thought at that time, we should have done that tomorrow. And that's, but the the whole lease has taken on a new meaning of approval, tacit approval in my mind. The expectation of the developers. So I I'm in favor of moving on with the lease with. With the understanding that that does not give tacit approval for the entire project on this particular site. And perhaps in that in that interim, we can look at alternative sites and. And keep moving with that process as well, understanding some of the public testimony that's been provided. In reams to us over the past week or so. So.
If I could just add to that, Mayor Burkey, I I I think that I I would want to simultaneously have staff. Ensuring that this is the the only site that that works. I would, I would want that additional work done on the part of staff. We we saw staff concerns in the staff report with this site. And I think that I would want. I would, I want to, I want to hear from staff as well. I mean, Kevin, you. I mean, Kevin, you are, you've looked at this more than anyone. I, I would be very interested in hearing from staff as to what your preferred alternative would be if it wasn't this one, if we were looking at these simultaneously.
Thank you, Melissa. One other, you prompted one other thought, which is we are, we will be meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, our partner in this, along with Nina and in terms of providing the funding, continued funding, I should say, for, for a model, Camp Hope model in our community. And we'll have an opportunity to further discuss the, the potential funding for, it's now been proposed as two camps, Purple Cliffs, along with this. And that combined with, with the, what the city has done, it has been successful. Hopefully we'll have a groundbreaking very, very soon with a sparrow on this, adjacent to this very site we're talking about this evening, which will be a $10 million investment on city land to provide 53 rooms for this very same population in a very controlled and full, full of wraparound services and hopefully everything that the homeless population can benefit from. So on, on this very property. So it's not like, I don't want to go walk away from this that we haven't done anything because that's a significant long-term investment and will be additive to our community, I hope. So we have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded that we instruct the city attorney to develop an, a lease agreement for this property. And that's, you know, I don't know if we'd call that a draft for further review. As we know, it has three different, or two, two more hearings amongst this, with this body before it would become an effectuated document before the lease is, is approved, fully, fully approved. Is that true? Dirk, you've got two more readings of the, of a potential lease after it would be, after it's received its draft form?
It's going to be first reading and then second reading on the order. It's, it's going to be two, yes.
Right, thank you. So.
You don't normally have another hearing at first reading and certainly not a second reading, but you could if you wanted to, but it would come before council twice.
Right, right. So we have a, a motion on the floor. Does everybody understand the motion? And any other further, other motions might? So let's just have a roll call. And so I'd impose on you, City Clerk, Faye, to have a roll call, please.
Certainly. Mayor Pro Tem Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Noes Bruthy?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
No.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Burkey?
Yes. So we have passed a motion to give instruction to the city attorney to prepare a draft lease. I hope out of that would become, we, we would evaluate conditions. He'll have questions that would be answered and maybe not be able to finalize that lease, in fact, until fully, until the land use process has, has gone through a certain phase, in which case he would incorporate items that would be resultant from that land use process into the lease, as I see it. So I, I would hope that that would remain, we would not fully approve that lease until the land use process has occurred. Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor Burkey. Also, in addition to what you just suggested, which I agree with, I want to see if there is council support to direct staff to simultaneously consider any of the alternative sites that were previously discussed for possibility.
We can, I, I would support that endeavor and I don't know if we can vote on that. It was not agendized as such for a vote on that specific topic. Dirk, is that something that we would bring to a vote this evening? Or just gain concurrence, general concurrence?
You're muted. Yeah, it's not agendized, but it's part of the same topic. So, I mean, I think that you could certainly direct that and have a concurrence for direction to staff without a vote.
Sure.
I just want, yeah, obviously no individual councillor can direct staff, but I'm very interested in a staff opinion on this as well.
It's consistent with my request for giving us an alternative for the, the least bad option.
The least bad, thank you, thank you for that. And I, I might add, you know, one of the, I've been continually looking towards a resolution of the De Nier Center and that was brought up a couple of times in our public comment this evening. And, you know, we've always said, well, it's just not available yet. The state hasn't made a determination of its use. And I think the city of Durango is not without political capital to approach the state directly with that option. And I know that staff hasn't felt that it was their prerogative or perhaps jurisdiction to, to make that inquiry of the state, but I, as Mayor Durango, am prepared to make that inquiry of the state directly if that's appropriate. So let's just do that. I want to know who to talk to. I know we, we want some resolution. That's an asset within our community. It's a taxpayer asset and we have a need. We are about to make an emergency ordinance of some sort to address our need and that is right in the crosshairs of solving this problem. So I would like to know who to, who to make that phone call to.
So looking into the De Nier Center would be definitely a, a, a great option to consider. But if not that, since we know that we have to act quickly by November, you know, for something right, right before winter, then I would just, I just want staff to consider all the other parcels that we originally brought forward. I know some of them were immediately eliminated, but I just would love that review. It would help me a lot in knowing that staff is saying that, nope, this is really the only and the best site. It would be very helpful for me in, in ultimately, if there is a final lease to approve and understanding that from staff.
And Amber, might, might I get a reminder of when our next, that Board, that joint Board County Commissioner meeting is?
On the first.
I know it's on the agenda, that this very topic is on the agenda, hopefully.
I believe it's on the first of October, Dean.
First of October, okay. So it's not really timely. If we need to talk to them before, I'd entertain that possibility as well.
I would support an earlier discussion if necessary as well to keep things moving and to reach clarity on, on some of the questions raised.
Yep.
Very good. Well, yeah, without a vote, I think we've probably given staff enough direction for this evening and to keep your head reeling for a while, Kevin. I apologize for any undue pressure we put on you and your staff, but we'd like to make this thing happen in the soon as possible timeframe. So, and Dirk, thanks for entertaining us and keeping us on track. With that, any further discussion while we have members of the development team here? I want to thank them initially for, for their presentation that was eloquent, brought up a couple of new points and gave, gives us as a body, I think, confidence that we, the premise of a Camp Hope model in our community is something that we want to achieve in the soon as possible timeframe. So with that, we'll move on to the next topic. And lost my computer while we're doing that. That was, the next item on the agenda is city attorney discussion. There is none this evening. He's discussed enough already. Item 11, the introduction of ordinances. We have none this evening. Brings us to item 12, administrative. We have 12.1, which is a interim city manager city update. I know that you had, you weren't anticipating doing this at 11 o'clock at night, but any words of wisdom for us, Amber?
Sure. I just have a few quick items. I'll make it very brief this evening, just for the public. I wanted to make sure that we could announce that proposed, there's updates to our budget calendar. On October 13th, there will be a joint city council Board of County Commissioners study session on the joint sales tax. On October 20th, there will be a presentation at the city council meeting of the city manager's proposed 2021 budget city council. And on October 26th, there will be the all-day budget retreat with city council. And then on November 5th, we're looking at reconciliation and a public hearing on the budget on November 10th. That November 10th date is a special meeting. And that is the information I have updating you for the upcoming budget meetings. And then I also wanted to let council know that staff is working on updating the goals based on the conversation that took place at the council retreat. And we will be providing you with draft goal statements within the next week and a half for your review and then future adoption at a meeting, hopefully in October.
Thank you, Amber. With that, the next item on our agenda is 12.1.2, which is discuss, discussion and possible action regarding a request to allow ongoing use of Buckley Park for a Black Lives Matter memorial. I want to pause for just a moment, see if we have a time check. It is 10:54. We've had a significant public comment on this earlier this evening. And is council prepared to dive into this issue? Or is there a desire for a continuance of this item? Or desire to discuss this at a special meeting at a later date? I'm open for your suggestions.
I'd like to finish, if we may. With, not, not to conclude, I'd like to finish with the discussion that's on the agenda. I know some people have, have stayed with us through all of this and so I think they're expecting to hear our thinking.
Absolutely. And thanks. And I'm glad that the folks have stayed with us. So we will, having no further discussion, we will launch into this and perhaps we need a staff update of the current situation at Buckley Park and what permits have been issued, perhaps a summary of that and, and then talk about possible options.
So Kevin, why don't you start out with the permits and then I can cover some possible options?
Okay, so as you know, it took a while, but we finally found two individuals willing to step forward and accept the permit responsibility for the Friday night event. The rules were pretty well established in the permit application as to what, what's acceptable and what's not. One of those things is removal of all of your materials at the end of the event. My understanding is, prior to, well, we've been the 22nd, I guess, they'd had their event and then on the 24th, the morning of, give me, I want to make sure I got those dates right. Yeah, Monday, the 24th, Parks and Rec staff went down very early when they got into the office to see if there was anything remaining from the weekend. There was, they removed it and notified the permit holders that those things were available to pick up. It was only a matter of a couple of hours. And others showed up at Buckley and reestablished the memorial shrine materials in place. At that point, we, we discussed just putting signage up that explained what the rules are regarding leaving things in place in the park. We chose not to do that because of the unique nature of different people coming and going. So now where we've been at is we haven't been enforcing since that one time. We do have a permit for Friday nights. They understand they're supposed to remove their materials. My sense is that it's not the same people that have the permit and are holding the event that are doing the shrineage. So we have a situation now where you have that variance request before you and they're asking to continue to have a shrine, which if you look at where they've been placed, it's kind of in the right of way a little bit. It's kind of in the park. Depending on what you want to do, it would be recommendation to have it in one place or the other because otherwise you need a right of way permit and a, the special event permit. So, you know, staff is looking for direction in terms of how we move forward on this.
So then I would like to step in here at this point. And council and the rest of the community heard a great deal of comment earlier in the meeting. And I'm hoping that the council can take in that information as well as all of the other emails, excuse me, that you've received throughout the, the previous weeks. And currently you have a formal request to maintain the location of the Black Lives Matters Memorial through November 2020 election. There have also been requests to see if there can be a permanent memorial. And there are a couple of different options. The first option would be to leave the memorial at its current location. There are a couple of other locations that staff has discussed and we wanted to make sure to provide some options to council for your consideration. So there's Buckley Park at the current location, potentially in front of City Hall or in Carnegie. It fits with the Carnegie building being the old library and freedom of speech issues. And there's the grass area adjacent there, however, does not have the same visibility as the Buckley Park location. And then the, for a permanent idea, staff thinks that the Community Relations Commission could work together with the community and, and the public art commission, the Creative Economy Commission, sorry, to commission a piece of art in 2021 that would be permanent and recognize the diversity of the community. And so that would be something for 2021 and we could budget any line item for a permanent piece or there could be fundraising. So that's another option. We would need to have a location for that permanent installment to go in. And a permanent commissioned piece would follow the same process that all other public art processes go through. And then finally, we felt that was important, well, there's another piece that the Botanic Garden group are currently fundraising for their literary garden and there will be authors of color and that are going to be, there's artwork that's going to be commissioned for that garden, but that's a separate item than this, so.
Could I ask, thank you, Amber. I'd like to ask a question of the attorney. And actually, I have been reading about First Amendment rights today. And I'm curious, because we talked about different locations, but it's, Amber, you sent information about it being free speech, really. And, you know, we don't get to determine necessarily where free speech takes place. It takes place in, in places that are known for, for gatherings. So I'd like to hear from Dirk about free speech. I've been looking at beyond just speaking, but also just materials and presentations along that way. And then I'd like to hear a sense of, I'd like to separate, Amber, the discussion. And I think it's great that you're thinking about the permanent and I wrote a note asking about that. I think tonight's discussion is solely on the ability to keep the memorial going in the location through November 2nd. And I'd also like to note that since I live very close to Buckley Park, I visit it regularly. And for the most part recently, the, there's been a real effort to keep that memorial right up to the, the sidewalk line so that I don't believe it's going into the sidewalk section, but it's between two pillars. So I don't, I'd have to ask Kevin if that constitutes the park or if that constitutes the sidewalk. But for the most part in the past week, it's been within that area.
The, the right of way appears to be right at the, kind of the inside edge of the sidewalk, where those box lights are, is, it's right in that general vicinity of where the split between the right of way and the park site. So I, I think it would be best to either be on one side or the other if there's a decision to go with something there that continues.
Hey, thanks. Dirk, I don't know what, if you want to give us a history lesson in First Amendment rights.
Yeah, this is a complicated topic, obviously, but, you know, the speech and The, uh, speech and, uh, demonstra-, you know, demonstrative type speeches, uh, also, it doesn't have to actually be words. You know, those kind of displays also can be free speech, obviously. Um, I think the question here in the parks and all of the parks are that. You know, we have a permit process where people can reserve the park and you, and get a permit. And so one of the main reasons that. Uh, the city wanted to have someone step up and get a permit is so that. We, we don't have competing uses and we don't have, so I think we do have under the First Amendment. Uh, the ability to, to impose some what's commonly known in the parlance of constitutional laws. Time, place and manner restrictions on speech so that, um. People can reserve spaces in a park and certainly not, you know, nothing that I see here. Is, uh, in any way directed at limiting speech. Uh, it is simply trying to coordinate speech with all of the people who may want to use it. So free speech is beyond. Uh, you know, just what people can say. It's also when they can say it, how long they can say it. Uh, and, and those sorts of things. So, you know, I do think that, um, in general, there are very few things that. City would seek to restrict free speech around. Um, so again, I think this is more about trying to. Regulate it in a time, place and manner restriction, which is allowed. I mean, the, the cases are consistent in allowing that. Uh, so I think there was some concern particularly from Park and Rec that if we didn't have permits. Then again, you could have people showing up, uh, or applying for a person, a different person could apply for a permit. For Friday night and then, um, so they were concerned about those kind of conflicts. So. I, I think that in my way of thinking, this is less a free speech issue than it is simply about. Reasonable regulation of the use of parks for free speech purposes. Uh, and I hope that helps, but, uh, that's a very short explanation of how I see it.
Thank, thank you, Dirk. Uh, I might add, you know, I, in, in my reading today, I'll, I'll, as well, you know, uh. Some of the more philosophical aspects of the, of the First Amendment, uh, you know, talking about government, uh, in our role. As, uh, as, uh, government leaders, we should not give government the power to decide. Uh, which opinions are hateful? For history has taught us that government is more apt to use this power to prosecute minorities than to protect them. So I, uh, that's how I start this mental process of just determining what's appropriate for. Uh, city council to, uh, to focus on. Let's follow the. By if we don't come to the defense of free speech rights for the most unpopular among us. Even if their views are antithetical to the very freedom of the First Amendment stands for, then no one's liberty will be secure. And in that sense, all First Amendment rights are indivisible. Um, so. And then the last thing is government, uh, just as Dirk said, can limit some protected speech by imposing time, place and. Time, place and manner restrictions. This is most commonly done by requiring permits and meetings and route for meetings and rallies and demonstrations, but a permit can. Be, not be unreasonably withheld nor can be denied based on the content of the speech. That would be what's called viewpoint discrimination and that's, uh, the basis of what would become unconstitutional. So it seems like, uh, this is a hot button in our community. It's timely. It, it, uh. It's not a particular group. It's, uh, it's a, it's a movement and I think it, uh. Uh, there are people within our community that, uh, uh, is representing a big segment of our people within our community. And I don't think we can, uh, kick it down the road, uh, particularly it's, it's sensitive and it needs, it's a, it's a. It's, people are hurting at this moment in time in our community. And if this helps in that regard to, uh, to, uh. Be able to express that grief in whatever manner, uh, I think it's appropriate for the city council to take action. And create a space with, uh, where they can, uh, where they can have that grief and express, uh. What the rest of the country is feeling as well. So, uh, not to preclude. Any other members of the community for similar expressions of, of their opinion. Uh, we saw that a week ago Friday night and I was at that, uh, Black Lives Matter, uh, event in the park. I also walked down to the corner and up the other side of the street and participated in what was going on across the street as well. So. I think it's just important for any, any person, a leader of a community to know what's going on in their community, not to be criticized for. Uh, witnessing, uh, events and opinions expressed in your community. It's just like listening to. Uh, two hours of public comment as we did this evening in my mind. So, that said, uh. Where can we find a place for this to occur? Uh, and I'd like to explore that. Amber's offered a number of options. Uh, I particularly don't mind it being left in, uh, Buckley Park. My preference would be out of the public right of way, so we don't encounter the same criticisms. That have, uh, currently being expressed about the encroachments of all our bump outs by restaurants onto the public right of way. I'd like to see a safe and secure, uh, area for this, uh, shrine to be located. Uh, if that's Buckley Park, great. Uh, I do know the Carnegie Library is, uh, another opportunity that is in the. Uh, offers that same ability to, uh, to participate and. Spend time and accommodate a number of people, uh, at that location as well. So. With that, I open it up for more comment from council. Barbara?
Thank you, um, and, and thank you, Dean. Um, actually, thank you for joining me at the Friday night vigil. And I, I think right now the, the location of Buckley is extremely important because. That is what's permitted for Friday night activity. And I also do want to emphasize that this does not seem to be in any. Group, but a number of people who seem to contribute to this. And as I've said to all of council, I see more people of color. Uh, in this location and the LGBTQ community than, than I do in any other location in town. And I also have. Myself more opportunities to have conversations with the diverse people. And I'd also like to say that. These are extraordinary times between COVID and issues around racial justice and systemic. Racism, um, and that the community, particularly the people of color that I've chatted with. Are expressing their hurt and this location gives them a place of comfort. And so I actually will put it out there that I support the location of Buckley. And I actually support the variants in, uh, these extraordinary times.
With that, I, I kind of like to review that some of the, the. The time, place and manner and the, the, how we, uh, what restrictions we do put on them, uh, on anybody for a. Monument of this type in any park, uh, we're, uh, so that we don't have, uh. Conflicts, certainly, uh, with, this is not meant to be, uh, this is meant to be a shrine, not a. A, a point of, uh, community contest, uh, so, uh, how, how do we? Uh, choreograph other, other requests in other parks that might come before us. And, uh, so that we can fly an even standard throughout our community and use of any public property. Uh, you, you touched on that, Amber, and I, uh. Yeah, I think it was your item number two, if I'm not mistaken, you, uh. Talking about the process and how we might, uh, uh, provide some guardrails around, uh. That would be imposed on this particular shrine as well as any others that might occur. And, and I'd reach out to council for any discussion in that regard as well. Dirk, you had, did I see you have your hand up for a second or you?
We couldn't hear her.
Okay.
I was agreeing with Dean. Yes, that was, that's what I had said was the standard, I, standard process and.
Right. So, specific to this, we would, uh, they would make an application, uh. To the city, we would consider it as, and they, this is their application. They've made this request of us to make a determination this evening. As I understand it is, uh. Uh, or would you propose, uh, a more extensive review and formal, more formal application on your part?
So I think what we need to, to touch on is typically for a, a permit, there are timeframes that an event would take place. And in this case, the memorial, I mean, you could have a variance in terms of the memorial can stand for twenty four hours a day during these dates. Um, and have some guidelines around that and that could clarify. That could be the clarification that's needed if you want to move forward with a, with a permit for this type of. Use on the sidewalks. So the memorial stays, it provides the safe place, it provides the gathering place. That can happen. Um, I think one of the issues that we're, that we are experiencing is that there's a permit in place for Friday. Night vigils at the BLM memorial at Buckley Park. And then after the memorial is over, things are cleaned up and then additional items are brought back and the memorial comes back to life. So there's, there's two different pieces. There's the, the memorial and then there's the, the event and. That's, I think we're hearing from one group of the population of saying, no, just take it down and, you know. Maintain that code enforcement related to the permitted timeline of having the memorial and the vigil on Friday nights. And then the other piece of what we're hearing is this is important. It provides a safe space. It's not a, just a couple of hours on Fridays. It is much more than that. So how do you permit? How do you permit this? Or does the council say the decision is that we will accept to leave this in place? For until X date. And then you can, we'll make sure that our staff, you know, goes through and. Request that we keep it clean and then there's not trash and it's kept in, you know, in a nice. Manner.
We've had circumstances in the past where we've had our installations that may last for more than a week or ten days or something like that. And. It was a special event permit if it was in the park. And so you would probably apply a special event permit specific to that item. And that location with some parameters put on it. Uh, and you could run that through whatever date certain you want to put on it. And that's separate from the BLM event on Friday nights. I, I mean, because that, we have that permit established for the BLM event on Friday nights. And they're clear that they're going to, you know, take down what they put up after their event is over on Friday nights. But if you want to go this way, you could have a special event permit just for that particular installation, whatever that looks like. Now again, if it's in the right of way, it's a little bit, it should be a different permit, but if they keep it in the park. Uh, there's no reason we couldn't use the same permit process.
I, I like the sound of that and just for the public to know that, yeah, that a permit for the event every Friday night through, uh, sometime in November. Has been issued and that's clear. And, uh, that takes care of issue, things like posters. Uh, other flags that have remained up after the event is over, uh, that are not specifically attached to this shrine, which is a. Sort of organic emerging, uh, sculpture that, uh, that is the subject of what this particular discussion is about. So I would like to, uh, uh, advance the idea of a particular permit issued so that we can, uh. Control e- other requests for permits of similar nature, uh, and where they go. Accepting the fact that this is an appropriate location. It's for cause. It fits the city goals for, uh, a number of reasons. Uh, it's supported by the city, if it is supported by the city, by the, as an example, the Community Relations Commission. Et cetera, and, and therefore is an approval sculpture and shrine, uh, for, to be left in place for a period of time. Via the special permit which was described by Kevin. Uh, so is that possible to dra- draft up a, a permit? That, uh, people that are in charge of the shrine can, uh, agree to and sign and, uh, have, uh. Uh, officialized by the city?
Dean, I have a question too. Does, so if another group comes and wants to do a memorial or a shrine or, or I don't, it could be called numerous things. Um, in Buckley Park, um, concurrently with the, um, current shrine. Would this permit process also apply to that?
Uh, that's what I was striving for exactly, Kim. And, uh, in, in that process, we would, uh. Acknowledge that, uh, you know, you know, we, we need to, everybody's got a, a First Amendment right. Until it incites violence or some other, uh, unfortunate activity. Uh, and so that's, uh. That would be part of, in my mind, part of, uh, how we would issue these. Uh, our, our intent is to acknowledge. Uh, that, I mean, we have, we, we know that we have, uh. Already encountered a truck rally in expressions of different kinds, uh, that were not necessarily permitted, but they were allowed to happen within our community. Fine, no problem. Uh, if, if, uh, uh, and. Look at the, the situation, the event that occurred last Friday night was, was also two people on opposite sides of the street. That was, ended up being fine. Both, both items were expressed and, uh, and I think we can, we need to allow that to happen. Uh, certainly, uh, well, this is an issue. Um, free speech is free speech, so. But we would have some control of where, where it happens, the, the nature of it, the size of it, the purpose of it and, uh. Whether or not it serves a city goal or not. Is what I was trying to.
Dean, uh, the, the, I agree with you on everything except whether or not it serves a city goal because freedom is. Doesn't necessarily have to support our city goals, just.
Avoid any kind of, um, content restrictions. I mean, I think that, uh, you know, we. Uh, again, unless it incites violence, I mean, there's some things that you can control, but generally speaking, it needs to be content. You, you know, any permit would need to be content neutral, uh, in terms of that. And I do agree that. If you offer up, uh, the possibility of this kind of permit for one group, uh, you, you will open up. Uh, that same opportunity for, uh, other groups as well.
I, I will just interject it. I had a call from an individual today who made it very clear that. Um, her political persuasion was, uh, pro-life and she would probably be very interested in. You know, taking the same opportunities offered to others to do something similar at Buckley Park. So. I, I mean, that's the kind of thing we're faced with here and, you know, that might be perfectly fine, but it also might be disturbing for folks in the community, just like. The calls we're getting, who people are disturbed by what they're seeing right now. So we just have to accept the fact that we could get any number of. Uh, perspectives that want to be displayed at Buckley.
And, and I'll reiterate what the mayor said. Uh, uh, I recognize that. Uh, Dean, you, you started off at the beginning where, uh, supporting, you know, contrary views is free speech. Um, I recognize that there will be things that I won't agree with, but it's their First Amendment right to have a space to, to actually be able to. Demonstrate and, and articulate that view. So, this is actually a huge issue and I appreciate the council. Uh, thinking about it. I, I also do believe that, um. Again, the permitting option seems in my mind, and I'm not a lawyer. To allow for the time, place, manner that has been, uh, uh, indicated. And without that permitting option. I don't see the be, being able to control, um, time, place and manner.
Thank, thank you. It's, uh, it's now eleven twenty one and so I'd like to maybe hear from other counselors and see if we are. Truly prepared to make this decision this evening or, uh, or, uh, how we, how we approach the decision. Uh, Melissa, you have any thoughts?
Yes, um, I absolutely appreciate the, uh, desire to have freedom of expression and to be able to express. Um, and free speech and I, I, I want, uh, people to be able to do that in our community and I want it to be. Um, I want council to think through how we can allow various groups to do it equitably and. Oh, you know, in a, in a very transparent way, so people know how to do it and how to go about it, recognizing that, um. That that's our job is, is we, we set policy and we have to, um, look at it, uh, in, in, in a higher level. You know, for equitable and fair treatment of all. So I'm just concerned about making sure we have policies in place that treats everybody equally. You know, for equitable and fair treatment of all. So I'm just concerned about making sure we have policies in place that treats everybody equally.
Uh, Chris, uh. You have any thoughts, uh, to share at this point?
Yeah, thanks for the discussion. I appreciate all the input. I I, um. I I've been thinking a lot about this. I think, um, that as I look out in our world right now, uh. You know, I'm sure we've all contemplated how can we support. The movement that's taking place out there and and I'm just going to call it out personally because I think. You know, that's one of those things as you watch what's happening out in the world and you and you see people dealing with systematic racism and. Um, you know, the issues that we're all watching, uh, you know, being in Durango, Colorado, I've. Often thought, how do you, how can we respond to that? And, uh, here's an opportunity that the community is presenting us and as I've considered that, um. I want to be of support to them and so, uh, I too, uh, would echo the sentiments that I would like to support. Uh, the Black Lives Matter as, uh, a movement and also their, um. Their memorial and for the duration that they've requested, I think. It's pertinent to stay and I think you've all have done it to some degree that it is, uh. You know, by in doing so, I think that group really does have to consider that we will also have to. Look at other groups that approach us and just by taking that action to. Keep that memorial in place, they're likely to engender sort of the counter argument. Um, and so the community is then confronted with that, so, but that's what freedom of speech is and, uh. So I'd like to support them and, uh, I'm 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 very much in favor of supporting their memorial in the park where it is now until the election. As I requested.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, I'm reminded of one comment that Councilor Baxter made, uh. Last meeting, which was, uh, uh, yeah. Protecting the park and the activities associated with family activity in the park and. I, as with this conversations unfolded, I, uh, as much as I like the current location. Uh, I think it may anticipating, uh, some amount of backlash. Uh, if there's a less charged location that could be, uh, proposed for the shrine. Uh, at this point, uh, just to, uh, just to protect the existing peaceful purpose of the park. Uh, and, uh, that that the Black Lives Matter folks could, uh, accept. And that that might be, um, Carnegie Library, but, uh. I I I fully appreciate the 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 current location and its incorporation into the Friday evening. Uh, permitted events and, uh. Support, uh, generally whatever the consensus of council might be. Any further discussion?
No, but I'm willing to make a mo- a motion if you're if you're if you're closing out.
Uh, I am closing out or or else the evening will close out for us, but, uh.
One more question, I guess, if we're if we're going to make a vote on basically likely keeping it where it currently is. Um, if another organization comes forward and would like to put a shrine up, um, are we willing to make another variance? Um, you know, in the same area, um. I I guess I feel like I just want to make sure that we understand, um. We we there there's support for this movement. I absolutely understand that. I support it as well, but I'm 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 talking about, um. Being equitable for all opportunities for freedom of expression. And I want to make sure that council also is, um, supportive of all opportunities for freedom of expression expression. And if it's designated in this location and if others want to do the same in this location, I want to make sure that we have. A regard and we aren't just picking, um. Picking causes, um, at this level.
I think we have to be. I really do. I think that's the requirement of doing this. And I think that the the group that wants to put this up permanently has to understand that, that that's. Truly what we are actually doing here is we're opening this up to them, but also to every other opinion. And, uh, so I I agree with your statement.
I I do too, Melissa, and I I think a couple of things. I think this is our, you know, this is our test case of writing this permit. But I think also as we write this, and I'm hoping that we can get to this discussion conclusion tonight. Staff can also make a recommendation and and again, I would look to the attorney for legality. Staff could also make a recommendation that, you know, we have three, we have four permitted sites. Within the park, on the boundaries of the park, you know, so. Or at any one time, you know, we have two locations because people might want to enter. I I look for that to work out the details, but I do recognize that, yes, as both you and others and Chris have said. With this comes, uh, conflicting view or differing views and that is probably what makes. A democracy difficult, but also something that I'm proud to live in.
Well, so long as we are willing to understand that that might potentially be an outcome, we don't know. Uh, maybe, maybe not, maybe it's just one, this one group that wants to continue to display, um, through the election, um, but. Um, then so long as we're we're being, uh, fair. Um, and providing equitable treatment, then I then I would be supportive.
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, you know, one of the, one of the things I would like to, uh, put into a. Any kind of an agreement is a timetable, a time, uh, specific duration. Which could be extended, but at least it gives us the opportunity to clear out the park, if you will. Uh, given if it gets out of control and I fully, uh. Uh, in some, but the the picture was painted of, uh, a number of groups not even related to. Uh, directly opposed, uh, folks of the black related to Black Lives Matter, could be anything. Uh, that all of a sudden this becomes, uh, as Kim mentioned the other day, uh. The the utili- peaceful utilization of the park for lunch and family activity is no longer. You know, an opportunity, uh, and I'd hate for that part to be sacrificed for, uh, uh, for any amount of duration. Much less, uh, permanent, permanently, uh, committed to, uh, opposing views on various issues. So, you know, if we could do it, if this goes for a thirty-day period, a sixty-day period. Um, I'm a little suspect suspect of any any shrine that represents a movement that is. Only up for through an election, you know, if it's a movement, it's a movement, it's not a politic. That's one way to politicize a, uh, particular issue is just to leave it up for an election. To me, that's recognition that it is a political issue.
Dean, that's still free speech, so I don't.
Exactly. I'm just trying to bracket.
Maybe maybe some stuff that we might want to take here would be to, um, suggest and it doesn't have to be tonight because I know we're all tired and we want to. We want to head to bed, but to suggest that maybe staff do some thoughtful contemplation of where we might have. You know, in the olden days, Berkeley's People's Park or a, uh, Freedom of Speech area. So that we don't have to worry about it becoming that Buckley Park i- is taken up from that, there's actually a place for it, people know it. They can go there and and celebrate it. I I'm wondering if eventually we might want to do that.
I would, I would definitely second that. Uh, it's something we talked about last time. Um, and recognizing that it, you know, it's a desire in our community, people want to speak out and voice their opinions and have memorials and. Um, I I think that that would be something that we should possibly consider going forward.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that.
I think the question is what to tell this group, starting tomorrow, what it will look like, will they? Should they anticipate that we were we're still working things through and. They, but they will be able to ke- keep this memorial going while we work through the details. Um, I guess that's the question I have of council is because I, you know, you talk about another site and that takes time to think through. Right now, we have a question in front of us, which is seeking permission to maintain this site. And and we have an option, which is to permit it, um, not stepping into the right of way, but staying, you know. Where they have been behind, uh, not to the edge of the sidewalk, if I understand it. So I recognize the discussion, the larger issue. I'm trying to reach a action tonight that gives, um. Gives an answer to the group that has been working to maintain this memorial.
Barbara, I think that that is the question on the floor, so to speak. Yes, is, um, go ahead and do we go ahead and ensure a permit for this? Knowing that we have to honor that free speech right for any group that wants to have the same type of permit, so. If I'm understanding correctly, that's what we're all discussing right there, right now.
That's to the point, Kim, and, uh, I I would recognize the fact that we do not have a permit. Uh, de facto permit of for this particular cause. We would need to create that and, uh, with a certain amount of creativity, uh, and, Amber.
Yep, Kevin had mentioned that there were special event permits, as long as it's in the park, that have taken place before for installations. That's the type of permit that I would foresee being, we can reach out and have someone complete that form. Um, they can fill out the permit and go through that process, that would be permitted for the installation, what I'm hearing Counselor Baxter say and I. Saw some nodding heads in agreement that a permanent location for freedom of speech, um, events and installations. Uh, just a staff recommendation would be potentially at the library, so the city library and then the old library. So you'd have the Carnegie Building, you could have an outdoor space at that location and then at the Durango Public Library, there'd be an indoor and outdoor space. Um, libraries and freedom of speech go hand in hand. Um, and so if we move through a process and we can make a proposal to council. For some permanent locations where we can come up with some permitting and event processes, but we have the locations called out. Then that will help us in the future with streamlining this process and, um, we can, we can work towards that. But for the BLM Memorial, specifically, we can move forward with the the temporary installation, special event permit.
Excellent. Well, that's the big goal. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
So I'll move that we go forward with the special event permit as described by Kevin and Amber. Um, and that the group of people who are maintaining this memorial, um, get advice. And, um, I I also, um, would look. You know, the request is through is for two months or is through November second and while I support that. I do also want, uh, at some point, some conditions that it be maintained, that it not look like it's just been discarded. Something to that effect.
I I think that might be implicit in that, uh, what what Kevin was describing in terms of, uh, keeping it maintained in a. Safe and orderly manner. I heard a second, uh, from Chris, it's been moved and seconded and, uh, any other discussion? All right, maybe we have a roll call, please.
On Salud Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Bricky?
Yes. Thank you so much, uh, for some difficult and fruitful discussion. We move on to our next item on the agenda is council reports and actions, uh, prior to adjournment, given the, given the, uh. Lateness of the hour through eleven thirty-six, uh, uh. I might ask that we keep this fairly brief and, uh, perhaps defer most of our conversation. Uh, that's not immediately urgent to, uh, another meeting, but, uh, uh, any other, any folks have council reports and actions? Kim?
I just had a question, you know, we've received a bunch of, uh, emails, uh, concerned about the proposed, uh, event motorcycle rally. If I have the right words.
Correct.
And I was just wondering if we wanted to discuss that with staff or just to discuss it in general?
I, very good question, it came to our, uh, uh, understanding that there was a, some sort of an approval. Uh, for the bicycle rally this, uh, this this weekend, uh, and, uh, talked to.
Motorcycle.
Motorcycle, yeah. Good for that. Thanks for that clarification, uh, and, uh. But Amber, perhaps you can, we can explain that and understand what approvals they may or may not have and.
Go at this point, definitely. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Um, so at this, at this juncture, the permit has not been approved. We've been working with San Juan Basin Public Health. The event, um, organizers were asked to submit self-certifications and we're working through the process with San Juan Basin. Public Health. After the first draft of self-certifications were submitted late this afternoon. Additional conversations were taking place. Bob Brammer and his team met with event organizers to ensure that they clearly understand. The guidelines related to the mask order as well as, um, the items in the self-certification. Related to the number of folks that are, um, allowed to be within certain areas. So there is, um, a section over on Tenth Street that's being requested for, I think they're calling it a block party. It is limited to, I believe, forty-two people at socially distanced tables. Um, and it is outdoors, so there's some additional requirements and requests on how that will be, um, enforced. By the event organizers and then there's the, um, parade that will stage in the Transit Center parking lot. That is currently proposed. Again, the socially di- social distancing as well as the, um, mask order. Is in place and then the parade down Main Avenue, I, my understanding was that there will be a request that that not be a. I know, like a no spectator, so that your spectators are not crowding around to see a parade like we would typically see during parades. Um, on Main Avenue. So again, the permit has not been finalized or approved and there's still conversations going on with conditions. Related to the approval between San Juan Basin Public Health and the city.
Thank you, Amber. That, uh, is that, it's certainly clear to me and unfortunate that, uh, the, uh. Motors, uh, expressed the fact that this is happening without those precautions being and and approvals being taken place. I, when I first heard of it, I thought it was in Ignatia or someplace outside the city, therefore not our purview. But, uh, uh, certainly, like the rest of us, uh, jumped on this issue as soon as we heard about it today. So thank you, Amber, for that clarification and I hope that they are successful in bringing this event to Durango in a. Uh, distanced and appropriate manner, given the COVID concern. This is not Sturgis, uh, so. Uh, with that, uh, any other items for council this evening? I know we had, uh, some neighborhood issues that we wanted to, uh, bring to council's attention and I would hope that, uh. Staff is working on those currently as well to address, uh, uh. Concerns about some of the completion of the Amos River Trail. Barbara?
Thank you. I just had one and it was one I had hoped to bring up last week, but we we did run out of time, so it, um. Uh, there've been a request both from members of the community and also with the, uh, Community Relations, uh, Commission. And I know Chief Brammer's on here to form a a citizens accountability group. And I actually was a mistake and I thought when the chief talked about that in June, he had a group that he was working with. That was more of an ad hoc group, but at the Community Relations meeting, we did talk about the need for that. And several of the members on that have already worked and there's best models elsewhere, so. I'd just like to to bring that to the forefront, that there's a request to form that, the chief has has heard that, um, and talked about that. And as we think about the boards and commissions, that this might be an appropriate request of the CRC. To help us think through that, what the, um, parameters are, are there constituents that need to be represented? Um, I'm sure I'm not thinking of all the questions, but I I do think as we think about it and at the September eighth meeting. We might even, as we target both the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Committee for what we hope for them to achieve. And the Infrastructure Advisory Board, I'd like to suggest that also if time allows, we might look at the CRC. And some of the three big things we'd like them to focus on with this citizens accountability possibly being one.
Uh, yeah, I don't know if, uh, Chief wants to respond to that now, but just, uh, let's, uh, you know. See how that fits into the, all the other activities that you've got planned and aboutlined relative to, uh. A new vision for, you know, the 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 items that you've already implemented and or are anticipating and and see if that. How how, uh, Chief might respond to that request, so. But if you'd like to say anything tonight.
When you're, I can comment really quickly. So we we have two different panels and I I think they're just getting a little bit confused on what the actual structures are. So we have a citizens advisory mission or or, uh. So we have a citizens advisory mission or, or, uh, a committee that we could form. Um, Chief Appso had it available to them. I've been using the CRC as that advisory seat in order to provide guidance to us on where we need to, um, be a little bit more, have a little bit more responsibility and fortitude to look into our policies and hearing from the community and different actions and groups. The other one is the one that's related to the Citizen Plate Review Panel. That is an internal panel that deals with personnel issues, um, and it's a little bit separate. So I, I guess a little bit clearer direction because I think we're trying to blend these two models together. And they are two separate and distinct things, um, to take two different issues into account.
So, and, and I raise this as a, as a heads up, recognizing we will solve it tonight. And the, the question comes up as if it's a advising the, the, uh, police department, should it be appointed by the police or actually department or actually appointed by the city council? And I think that's more of a, I just want to give a heads up that that might be part of our discussion when we talk about the boards and commissions and the role of the advisory boards.
Correct, and that one would be something that our policy dictates that our, our legal advisement would, um, give us direction on to see how we want to appoint those positions to, to our, to that commission.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, any other discussion this evening? Uh, wow, this can't be all. This is the end of the meeting, so, uh, it's good to see chief still up and, uh, as, as he is usual. And, uh, but, uh, thanks so much for this, uh, really difficult meeting and all your time. The time is now eleven forty-four and I adjourn this meeting with Durango City Council.